All right, thank you so much. The time is 4:30. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, we're going to go ahead and open up the work session for the 2019 and 2020 fiscal year budget. I just want to take a moment before we kick this off and thank our Budget Committee, Councilmember Karen Wall, Councilmember Kristen Larson, and myself, as well as all of our staff members, department heads, who have contributed a lot of time, energy, resources in helping us work through this budget. This is the first year that we have gone out into the community and we've solicited extensive feedback in open forums, as well as heard from people who have come to us personally. So, all of that feedback was taken into consideration. And at this time, I am going to go ahead and turn it over to our town manager to begin with our presentation.
Madam Mayor, members of council, on behalf of staff, thank you very much for your assistance in this endeavor. Once again, thank you to the Budget Committee and all the staff for the efforts that they've provided getting to this point. Hopefully, you've found a very comprehensive, well-to-track budget document. This is the farthest-along budget document that I've seen at this point in my last three and a half years in the town of Florence. Very proud to work with the Budget Committee to provide a recommended budget that most all the errors have been worked out. Some reorganization took place, but in a logical way, and we've got some exciting things included in the budget with that. I'm going to welcome our new Finance Director, Ray. Ray, would you like to take over?
Absolutely. So, good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. We are here this afternoon to present you with the 2019-2020 Town Manager Recommended Budget. However, before we start, and kind of what Mayor already said and Brent already said, I want to thank the Budget Committee for their time, effort, and contributions during the budget process. I want to personally thank the Budget Members who are here, starting off with Mayor Tara Walter, Councilmember Karen Wall, and Councilmember Kristen Larson. Although I wasn't part of this year's budget process, it's been my experience that we wouldn't be able to present you with this balanced budget without your guidance and support. I also want to thank the Department Directors and town staff for their contributions during the budget process. I also want to recognize our Budget Analyst, Becky Jimenez, for her contributions in the development of this year's budget that we are going to present to you tonight. As you may recall, Becky was hired by the town back in November as a Budget Analyst. However, prior to the town hiring her, Becky served as our Finance Director for 16 years and as a Council Member after she retired. So, at this point in time, I call upon Becky to say a few words about the 2019-20 budget process. Thanks.
Thank you for allowing me to come before the council today as your Budget Analyst. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I do want to start off by telling you that the Town Department Management and the Budget Committee had carefully reviewed all of these budgets. I know for certain by working with our department managers that they take their budgets very seriously. And especially, I've noticed over the course of the years from when I was on, I was a Finance Director till now, they are even more considerate of their budgets, very aware of what it means to balance a budget, and they're very conservative in how they budget. They want to ensure that they go through this year with enough money in their budgets to perform the functions within their departments, but at the same time, they're considerate of the other members of the town also that are trying to develop their budgets. The Budget Committee is a specialized group that gets together, but prior to that, I want you to know that our budgets start earlier than the Budget Committee. Usually, in October or November, we start the budget process. It's quite lengthy, quite technical. We go out, we send out our CIP documents to develop the new projects that we have. Then, we send out our budget documents themselves, so the staff has plenty of time to work on them. As they come back in, they're input into basic formats that we have, and then they start to be reviewed. At the finance level, we'll look at things and maybe question them, and then send it back out to the departments. By the time we get a fairly preliminary budget done, we go through an analysis administratively to kind of question things and look at things to clean it up prior to going to the Budget Committee. At the same time, we're developing our personnel costs. There's various costs that goes into it, starting out with making sure that we have a health insurance bids and that we know about how much it's going to cost to provide health insurance for our employees. After this, it goes again through a review, maybe two times, three times with the administration to clean things up. Then, it goes to Budget Committee, who in turn reviews everything that's been submitted. So, it is quite a lengthy and careful review of everything. The Budget Committee weighs everything that happens. It looks at what's been requested as far as considerations for personnel, for items that are needed in the CIP, but at the same time, it's also weighing things out. What can we afford? What are the priorities? What can we do with the money that we have available? We do revenue projections based on historical. We take a look at what's occurring statewide and try to project things out in that manner. We look departmentally to see how are the departments functioning? Are we having rate increases? What do we need to do? And then, we try to balance our expenditures within those revenues. The Budget Committee does not make decisions. They make recommendations for you all to look at and to consider as you're going through things. I want you to know also that any time you make an adjustment to the budget on the floor here, right now, your general fund is balanced. We have enough revenue to cover expenditures. If you decide to do something different, somebody's going to have to give something up. So, carefully in your considerations of this, we want to make you aware of that. Just because something may be needed or necessary, someone is going to have to give up a portion of their budget. We set the expenditure limitation, and then after that, we cannot come down off of that number. You either have to reduce, you can reduce the budget, but once the expenditure limitation is set, you cannot increase the budget anymore. Any changes to revenue, either a loss or increase, if you lose revenue during the year, well, we adjust our budgets accordingly. If you have additional expenditure during the year, that's unavoidable, we have to reduce expenditures. It could be departmentally, or it could be in another department. So, we're always taking a look at things this way. I hope you enjoy our budget that we've set forth. Budgets are not sexy or fun or whatever, but they are something that's very necessary for the town, and it is kind of exciting for us as financial people to make sure that our budget's balanced. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I did also, I had two more points that I wanted to express, and you touched upon them. The result that we have before us this evening is a balanced budget. That is something that, as a council and staff, we should be very proud of to provide for our citizens. I'm happy with the revenue projections that were shown and the efforts that were made to keep our overall expenses down. Mr. Sanchez?
So, this slide here is kind of an outline of what our recommended budget is. So, these few, these three budget bullet points is we're going to go over the strategic budget goals for 2019, 2020, our capital improvement program, which is commonly known as the CIP, and our 2019-2020 recommended operating budget. So, at this point in time, I'll call upon Brent to go over the strategic goals for the 2019-2020 budget.
Thank you, Ray. For those folks in the audience and those folks watching us at home, a lot's been talked about what a budget is and what a capital improvement program are and what they mean for a town. The way that I break it down for people all the time is, just like your family, you have to have a plan for what are your priorities? Where do you want to expend your resources to improve your quality of life? And to make sure that you have a sustainable budget for your family to see that if you can afford to send your kids to college or go on that Hawaiian vacation. We have a series of documents, just like all cities and towns do, that we utilize to make key decisions. And some of those are very general in nature, and some of those are very specific. It all starts with our general plan. The general plan is a 20-year look for a city on what it hopes to be, how it wants to develop, and the investments that need to be made, both quantitatively and qualitatively, to meet its future and to look towards sustainability and its use of resources. Then, there are specific area plans. The Territory Square is an example, the North Area Plan in the town of Florence. And that gets down to more specific plans, the transportation plan, which is out front, and there's a public hearing on tonight. Very importantly is the council strategic plan, which was approved in 2017, and we're going to update this year. Last year's budget and CIP are guiding documents in how the town intends to meet its vision. So, when we sit down with the Budget Committee and we work through the process, we set a list of strategic goals. Some of those high-level, some of those a lot more micro, some of those are specific to conversations had on the floor and other actions taken by the council over the course of the year. In general, and I'm not going to read these slides, I'm not a slide reader, a lot of things that we consider have to do with making sure our community is safe, making sure our community is sustainable, making sure that we have the tools necessary to provide good customer service. I think also very important in that is our future sustainability, and that's where the capital improvement program comes in. So, when we get away from the general and we get more into specifics, we try to do a breakdown here kind of by department and the type of things that we look at when we make decisions. So, from the Police Department, we spent a lot of time talking in the Budget Committee this year about staffing and making sure that we have staffing to not impact the shifts, to not impact our public safety on the streets. And a lot of conversations have gone on over the last year about community policing and how we deploy our resources and the types of things that we do in the community. From the Fire Department perspective, we've really moved forward in the last few years in a number of different ways, but when we talk about standard operating procedures, we made an investment in our medical program this last year. We brought on a medical officer, and we've kind of changed the ways that we handle our medical procedures. Obviously, we've invested a lot in training of our staff. We've sent two of our fire captains back to Bethesda, Maryland to get very specific training. That has provided dividends. Of course, we sent one of our police officers to the FBI Academy this year. We think it's very important to continue to invest in our people. We've worked really hard on fire protection and education as part of the process, and we want to make sure we continue to do that going forward. From a library perspective, we talked a lot about the quality of existing programs and providing services to membership. We also understand how important continuing partnership with our local school district is as to the success of that library. We've talked a lot about the ongoing Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan and what that means to make sure that we can invest in that, and the importance of community development itself. We've just updated the building codes. We've made some amendments to our zoning requirements over the last couple of years. We're embarking on a general plan update, a very key document for the future of the town. We had some conversations about annexations and the economics of annexations. In terms of general government, how do we look at intergovernmental agreements? How can we expand partnerships with other entities? How can we continue to enhance our relationship with community organizations? And how can that pay dividends to the town of Florence? From a community services perspective, take a look at what we do. One of the things that we spent a lot of time thinking about this year is beautification in the downtown. That included actually going door-to-door and doing a survey regarding the planters downtown, because as we found out, some people are very excited about the planters and other folks do not like the planters at all. That's one of those things that we thought we'd need to go out and collect some information and report back to the Budget Committee. Downtown events and existing town events continues to be a topic of conversation. Many times over the last two years, there's been a discussion about a bluegrass festival or jazz festival. That was entertained as part of our conversations. Taking a look at the CIP, projects constructed, success, challenges, key investments, and how we work with people like Pinal County to make sure that our timelines are set for infrastructure, and working with people like Johnson Utilities, and how infrastructure is key to our future economic development. Lastly, kind of looking at our revenue stream and sustainability from a financial perspective. Once again, general plan, annexations, I talked about that, a strategy and approach that is not only external but internal in terms of business retention, business expansion, training. You're all aware of the partnership that we've had with CAC over the last year to provide some training and seeing how we can expand upon that. Long-term water has been an ongoing discussion. This town has made some key decisions and is ahead of the curve in terms of most communities in Arizona and certainly the other communities in Pinal County. It makes me smile when I find other towns, and there was an article, I believe, last week in the Santana Paper about some of the things that Queen Creek is doing. Queen Creek is following Florence and doing some of the same things that we started doing two and three years ago in terms of acquiring physical water and paper water for our future sustainability. Revitalizing the downtown has continued to be a discussion, and it was a very detailed discussion at the Budget Committee level in terms of what do we do? What type of relationships do we want to have? How can we be involved? How can we lead by example? And we've done some of that. The facade program, the fire alarm program in the downtown, investments in key water lines in the downtown to make sure that we have fire flow requirements, as well as things like the Adamsville Cemetery. These things were discussed at length. Investments in planning, working with our local home builders and trying to attract new developers to our town. With that, I turn it over to Ray.
So, here on 2019-20 recommended budget, staff positions, additional changes, transfers in public safety. We had one new fire marshal position, which 75% of those, with 75% of those wages could be charged in 19. So, basically, what we're going to do is we're not going to hire until October, so after the first quarter of the fiscal year. We also had a new police sergeant. Same thing, that position, we won't be hiring until October of 19, so after the first quarter of the fiscal year. Public Works includes facilities and fleet. Here, we're removing an engineering technician from the budget. So, kind of the approach here was, we took a conservative approach with an attempt to remain fiscally conservative by maximizing operations with the lowest practical staffing levels.
I think it's important to point out, Ray, that although it says "one new police sergeant", and that is true, it's a police sergeant that we don't have on now, this is employing a police sergeant, that position that we eliminated two years ago in the budget and filling that position again. We had a retirement in that position, and for budget reasons, we didn't delete the position, we just never filled the position. So, this would be filling a vacant position that we've had in the past.
Okay, so the next slide here are new projects, programs, and enhancements for 2019-2020 in the CIP. One of those projects is the network server infrastructure. We also have a radio tablet and TASER replacement, building assessment, replacement of a utility vehicle, design of a new recreation center, riding lawnmower for parks maintenance, also Main Street planters, and I think that was discussed earlier, fire sprinkler system, which is from a revolving fund, North End Framework, LOMAR Phase 1B, and major repair and maintenance items.
For the public to make more sense of this document, number one, design of a new recreation center. There's been some funding set aside in the draft budget to work on a public-private partnership to potentially design a recreation center of the future where the town would share in the costs and the cost recovery from that facility instead of it being a standalone facility. We've been, we've been working on that for about a year. It's bore some fruit. It requires additional analysis. Main Street planters, as I mentioned before, we did a door-to-door survey, and to our surprise, the overwhelming result of that was that the folks downtown want the Main Street planters. They do not want them to go away. One of the requests that was requested by council during our meetings and our requests early in the budget season was the idea of doing a grant program to partner with folks that own buildings downtown to assist them in installing a sprinkler system in their buildings. We have included that project in the draft budget. The North End Framework, LOMR Phase 1B, LOMR stands for Letter of Map Revision, and essentially, that's code for taking property out of the floodplain that's currently in the floodplain, just like what took place for the library and then the adjacent 12 acres, so that we have developable lots in our downtown to push the North End Framework study and that plan forward. Clearly, we have some of that land, and that is developable now, but at some point, we believe we're going to have some success in terms of citing people on those properties, and we want to make sure that we can continue growth into that framework area.
And Ray, in addition to this slide, I just want to make sure that we point out, like, the town has made significant investment within our infrastructure. And then, also, two more points. The United States Federal Reserve says for every $1.50 spent on these projects, you can expect about a $3 return rate on investment. So, if you look at our future economic development efforts, they're tied directly to our investment in infrastructure that we're currently making today.
The next slide here is again continuing the CIP. So, we're going to replace three patrol vehicles and also replace a truck at facilities maintenance. We also have some street projects. One of them is the Main Street Extension, which is going to enhance the roadway near SR 79 and relocate irrigation for neighboring properties. Also, the Hunt Highway, reconstruction of two lanes. Adamsville Road, Plant Road to Town Limits, AC pavement, also Adamsville Road, Main Street to, oh, I believe I said that one already, Plant Road, AC pavement, replacement of two trucks, and pavement preservation.
The only thing I would add on this slide is, because I'm sure people will have a question on this, has to do with Hunt Highway. So, it's going to be a few years before Pinal County widens Hunt Highway down to the town boundary. As it stands now, their plans go to Arizona Farms Road. The reason it says two lanes is because there's, we don't need four lanes right now, and to put that extra pavement out there for a short section without having enough traffic to need it and without improving operations would be not great use of the people's money. So, the intent is to design for four lanes, set the center line in terms of the grade of the road where the future center line will be for four lanes, fix the drainage for a four-lane road, but only pave two lanes at this point, and then, when needed, bid to build the additional two lanes in a future year when Pinal County gets this far south.
Okay, and this slide here again is the continuation. So, there's some water projects, the electronic water meter project, the utility barn yard, River Road Water Line, water upgrade south of SR 287, and there's a few wastewater projects here, the jetter trailer, south wastewater treatment plant, odor control/dust abatement, the north and south wastewater treatment plant expansions. On our sanitation, it's going to be a recycling station and any public requested projects.
So, clarifications on this slide. The electronic meter project will be before council tonight. It is going to be an 18- to 24-month project. So, this project will extend into a couple of different budget years. If anyone's wondering what the River Road Water Line is, we need to build a new water main to support economic development on the north end of the town south of the river. So, all of this area in the north end plan, an additional sewer main and an additional water main need to be built. The reason it says River Road is those plans all include a principal arterial roadway to be built adjacent to the river. That will likely be built on retaining wall, and we hope that that is the road that we will get an interchange with the North-South Freeway when the North-South Freeway is built to give us direct access onto that freeway and access to our town and our economic development corridor. So, associated with that project, it's not just a road, it's also those utilities to be able to serve those areas.
The next slide here is employee compensation, which encompasses our medical, dental, and vision plans. The overall increase was about 1.4%, 1% to medical and 10% to dental. I guess the thing was to minimize the impact to employees and town budgets. Merit increases for 2019-2020, town budgeting up to 5% merit increase, and that is based upon performance. So, not everyone would probably receive the 5%, but we have it budgeted for up to 5%. The estimated cost of the merit increase town-wide is about $187,000, and it's split into the general HERF, water and wastewater sanitation funds. As in tradition, any merit increase again is awarded based on employee's anniversary date and not with the start of the fiscal year. The next slide here is going to be an analysis of our general fund balance. So, basically, the available fund balance for our use is the amount of cash available for expenditures. This comes from accumulation of prior year's revenues exceeding expenses. If we take a look at 2016, we started about 8.2. We're projected to end 2019 about 11.4. What I like to, when I look at a slide like this, the increase in the general fund balance shows a good indicator of strong financial health, but also do want to point out that these balances do not include the deduction for reserve, which is currently about 1.8 million. The reserve is for financial security within the fund and is changed annually based upon a percentage of revenue set aside. This formula- This formula is 500,000 plus 10 percent of operating revenues.
This is the perfect slide to point out, in terms of Florence's financial health, it wasn't that long ago in 2015 where we were operating 1.6 million dollars in the red. Not only did we put money away at the end of that fiscal year in June of 2016, but we've continued to grow our fund balance on an annual basis with an unprecedented amount of funds spent on projects, important projects in the community, including not only infrastructure projects, but additional programs, projects, more than just like Public Works programs, but programs like the facade program and other things that we hadn't been doing in the past. We've been really busy accomplishing a lot of things and at the same time, not only satisfying our financial requirements and our financial health, but growing that financial health in case we end up in a situation where we have a negative hit or there's a downturn in the economy. This is a great slide, Mark, to document. I saw Mark earlier.
Yeah, it demonstrates sound financial management while at the same time, it gives us this budget an opportunity to invest in our future and our current infrastructure. Mark? No, I'm just kidding.
So next slide here is just a overview of revenues and expenses. The projected revenue for 1819, we're looking at about 256,000 revenues over expenses. However, in budget year 1920, we are looking, expenses will be more than revenues by the tune of about, a little under 500 grand. To help kind of remedy this, I'll be coming to you later on tonight in the regular council meeting asking for budget adjustment.
So last year, council changed its previous protocol in terms of how to handle legal costs. And instead of physically budgeting for legal costs in Cliff's budget, in the legal budget, we chose to utilize funds in savings to pay for those legal costs. If you recall, that was 500,000 dollars, so that's why this shows 498,600, is that's that 500,000 that was planned to be used from our cash reserves for legal fees. So it's a balanced budget minus the 500,000 for legal fees.
Next slide here is, again, is the general fund analysis of our revenues. For 2018, 19, we budgeted 15,159. For 2018, 2020, what we're expecting, what our projected revenue, where we're expecting to get this current year is 15,769, meaning that the town expects to receive nearly 600,000 more than what we originally forecasted in our budget last May. For 1920, revenues is expected, as anticipated, to be about 16,472, or an additional 700,000 more than what is projected for the current fiscal year. Again, just want to remind that these are estimates for revenues are based upon stuff that we, or literature that we get from the state of Arizona, as well as our own analysis and projection of trends in revenue increases.
This year, we even went further on the budget projections than we have previously. Of course, we rely on the League of Cities and Towns and the State in terms of their projections for state shared revenues, which you'll see here shortly, makes up the vast majority of the revenue the town of Florence receives. But we did two independent revenue projections and then compared those two revenue projections, one of them essentially based on past years and growth from past years and what we've seen, and another one based on an independent methodology, and all three of those comparisons turned out incredibly close. One was low, one was high, and one was in the middle, and I believe we used the middle for budget committee purposes. And talking to Ben earlier, I think that we should be getting an update from the state as soon as this week or next week in terms of state shared revenues. We have utilized their previous document, which we received in February up to this point. We're hoping for another, hopefully, positive bump in the next couple of weeks.
So this slide right here just shows what our general fund expenditures are. For 2018, 19, what we had budgeted in terms of expenditures was 15,229. For 1819, our expenditure projection is coming in about 15,512. This increase for 1819 is largely due, again, to what we previously mentioned, our legal fees. And for 1920, our expenditures budget is expected to be about 16,971. The increase in budget expense for 2019, 2020 is due to an increase in general government, public safety, and community services. The increase in both revenues and associated expenditures from 1819 and 1920 is indicative of a growing community and a healthy economy. So here's, presenting to you a pie chart of what our revenues, where they're derived from. Forty-eight percent of our revenues come from pretty much state shared revenues, and Brent mentioned that we'll be getting updated numbers sometime at the end of this week, hopefully, if not next. I did want to point out that 26 percent of our revenue comes from taxes, but of that 26 percent, only 7 percent come from property taxes. I wanted to point that out.
That's a very important point, because oftentimes, when we talk to folks and comments that we get from folks, there's always complaints about property taxes and how much property taxes are charged. It is a very minor portion of our revenues. Our rate went down last year, and we forecast reducing the rate again this year, and we'll be coming back to council with respect to that. But if you get those comments, have those folks look at their property tax bill, they'll find out that a very minor portion of that goes to the town of Florence. It's all the other districts and the county that receive a vast majority of those property tax funds.
So the next slide here is a pie chart on our general fund expenditures. As you can see here, about 45 percent of our general fund expenditures are for public safety, and the next one is the 31 percent, which is administration. However, I did want to point out that administration is made up of all the towns' departments. For example, town council, administration, court, legal, finance, human resources, information technology, and economic development, and general government. So the next slides here, the next few slides, we're going to go over the HERF revenue budget, or HERF budget, or highway user fund budget. Just kind of want to just take a look here that our revenues, if you take a look at them from 17, 18 to 1819, and up to 2019, 2020, that our expenditures are actually more than what our revenue projections are. That kind of ties into, again, it's my understanding that in previous years, it's been council's, I don't want to say directed, but kind of direction to kind of pay down some of these fund balances. So that's why you see that we're actually spending more than what we're bringing in. However, I do want to mention that it's still balanced budget because we are using some of our fund balance reserve. This next slide here is our impact fee budgets. So these are the balances we're projecting for 2018, 2019, and what we're budgeting for So if you take a look here, I want to point out that like the police and the fire seem to have larger balances, and that is because we're, these funds are being set aside for future growth, primarily in the northern part of the town. And it's also that, it's my understanding that we're in compliance, having these balances the way they are, and the uses of these fees. So the next slide here is going to cover the enterprise funds. I just want to remind council that these funds are intended to be self-sufficient. This is why we'll come to you from time to time and ask for increase in user fees. And so just kind of think of it like a business, it's separate from our main government. Also want to point out that the expenses, both for the current year and next year, are more than revenues. Again, it's my understanding that it's been council's decision to continue to spend down the balance in order to fund current and future projects. And that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
All right. Council, any questions regarding this recommended annual budget and capital improvement plan?
I have some questions.
Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor Anderson.
I have questions about two different items. One, I made a request for the Historical Society to get some special funding. We have funded the Historical Society Museum, I should say, over the years for different projects, and they're in a project now where they're trying to raise money for expansion, roof, and adding on to the building. We have on our regular agenda tonight a recognition of the historical importance and the preservation of our town, so I think that helps justify giving some money to the Historical Society. The second thing that I wanted to bring up is that I had asked that we hire an economic developer and put an economic development person on staff. I think we're behind the eight ball when it comes to economic development. If we look at Coolidge, Casa Grande, all of our neighboring towns, they're getting ahead of us when it comes to economic development. We're just not doing what we should be there, at least that's my opinion. So I would ask that we add money for Economic Development Director, because if we start that now, it's going to take us a while to get a director in, it's going to take a while to get him on board, develop a plan, an economic development plan. So we probably won't see any action, you know, positive action from an economic development person for 12 months. So that's the two things that I wanted to say that I wanted to add. The other thing that I don't like in the budget is the recreation center. We had quite a controversy when we spent 12 million dollars for a water park, and now we want to spend 6 million dollars for a recreation facility that's going to be in the downtown area when most of our population now and our growth area is north of the river. So I just have a problem with that.
Would members of the Budget Committee want to answer those questions, or do you want me to do it?
Well, just for part of the Budget Committee in regards to, and please chime in afterwards, because I know I'm going to miss something, but in regards to funding for the Penal County Historical Museum and their projects, you're right, we have in the past made partnerships with them. However, at some point, they do need to have some ability to stand, and when government continues to give, there has to be a mechanism of what we receive in return legally, legal definition. Now, and I-
They've given us that, of the service that they're providing.
Okay, but you're, hang on, let me finish, because I'm thinking through my thoughts very clearly. There's also other organizations that other members have said, hey, we should fund the VFW. The VFW has a crack in the stucco, they provide a service for our veterans, they're essential in our community. Another member of council said, hey, you know the Florence Women's Club, they contribute a lot, they give scholarships to the youth in our community, their building is in need of some repairs. Another person said, hey, the Elks, the Elks have the Feeding Empty Little Tummies program, and they contribute to scholarships, and, you know, they have some needs as well. So at some point, budgetarily, we have to look and say, how can we justify what we do? Now Brent, I'm going to turn it over to you at this point, just in this one agenda, or one topic item.
Okay.
Because I do believe in the Historical Museum, but I also have to look at it from being on the Budget Committee, knowing what we have as a team to work with and be able to expend without negatively impacting the services that we provide to our citizens and, you know, what we want to achieve for the town, what we were here to do. Go ahead.
I believe the request was for $40,000.
Yes.
We had a conversation, and essentially, the advice that staff provided to the elected members of the Budget Committee was twofold. Number one, if we want to do this type of arrangement, either one, we need to have a contract with this entity similar to the one we have with the Chamber of Commerce, where reports are provided, statistical data is provided, and they're performing a service on behalf of the town, and we could certainly share with council a copy of our contract that we have with the chamber, but it's specifically accounted for, just like a contract would be with somebody to design and build a road or to design and build a water line. That would be one way to do it legally and avoid some of the constitutional challenges that could exist. Number two, to speak to the mayor's issue about other entities and requests, I've seen this before multiple times in my career, what I've seen other entities do to handle that is to set money aside in the budget on an annual basis and do a, like an application grant program for nonprofits in the entity, in the town, in the city. The challenge is, and I've seen it firsthand, and I'm sure that if you search the internet, you'll see it as well, you're essentially going to business with these folks you provide grants with. If they make decisions, statements, do things that are unwieldy, the town then becomes involved in those legal issues from supporting those entities. I have seen things from folks that got arrested for doing something that was unseemly to public statements made and how they reflect on those local entities. The other challenge is, once you start funding an entity, as soon as you decide that you can afford financially to fund that entity, it then becomes a huge controversy in your community because you're then shutting that entity down by not providing those funds. So once the decision's made, it's impossible to reverse that decision going forward without a lot of political challenges. So that was the advice that was provided, and for what it's worth, that request did not move forward with the Budget Committee.
May I respond?
Go ahead.
Well, the museum staff did provide a very detailed explanation of the services that they provide. I won't go into all that tonight, but they do provide education programs, they are the historical depository for the town, town has given them fire vehicles, and our fire department and people here on the council has supported that to, you know, get those things in a facility that can be viewed. They do provide a tourist attraction for the town. So I think that they do provide a service, education service to our children and our adults that is not available to any other civic organization, not in that quantity that they do.
Madam Mayor, my request of you this evening in these proceedings is, as requests come up, I would, I understand we should not be voting, but I'd like to get an idea that a majority of council members supports that request, and then staff will go back and analyze the budget and see where we take money from to be able to fund these types of requests, and then we probably bring the Budget Committee back again to discuss those individual requests and where staff has taken from to fund. So if it's possible to find out if there's a majority of council that supports this request, that would be very helpful for us from a budget management standpoint.
Absolutely, and I agree with you. Just know that this was something that was discussed by the Budgetary Committee and taken into consideration, and should anything be changed or brought forward, it will have to come from something else, so just be aware. All right. All right. So, Mr. Hawkins, Councilmember Hawkins? Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I apologize. Go ahead.
I think my mic is working, sorry. I've read the document that the Historical Society provided with regard to their value to the community, and I recognize how valuable they are. My concern about this request is twofold. One is the gift clause. The town cannot just give money to anybody or any entity, even though we may all think that they're worthwhile. There has to be a legitimate tangible benefit in exchange for any funds that are given. So, from that perspective, if we look at the list of items that the Historical Society provided, these are all items that they would provide regardless of any funding that the town may provide. What they're looking for is money to provide for expansion, for repair of their roof, and for a facility to house a fire museum, all of which I strongly support, but whether or not the town should be providing that one-time funding or part of that one-time funding, which they estimate to be $200,000. They do have a very active fundraising effort going on right now, to which I've contributed and to which I know others of our town staff have contributed. So, there's widespread support for the museum among the town staff and council, but I personally cannot support a sum total donation or gift to the museum. Whether or not a tangible service could be provided to the town for which we could contract, from my perspective, is rather iffy. So, unless I were to see some very specific suggestions of what the museum might provide to the town, for which the town would be willing to pay, at this point in time, I don't think we're there. It may require further discussions with the museum, if in fact, the council and other members of the Budget Committee feel that that's a worthwhile undertaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hawkins, did you have something you wanted to say?
It's been covered.
Okay. Councilmember Larson?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. I agree with what Mayor Walter and Councilmember Wall both said regarding the issue. I do support them as well. I wish them the best, but I feel that there's a lot of things that are not set in stone. Like, if there is something that they could tangibly give to the town that we could in turn have a contract for, I'd be willing to see that and take a look at it, but I just don't see it at this point as something being tangible.
Thank you.
Well, there is one thing that I did want to point out. They're definitely an asset for Florence. I mean, they are a draw. There are tourist buses that come here, there's people, just, you know, regular tourists too. They are definitely an asset, and I think we should try to support them any way we But, you know, we could do that through, which I feel we're not doing enough of myself, is promoting the town, advertising, travel magazines, you know, whatever. Anyway, I've been trying to, you know, get some of, get more of that done since I've been on the council, but I think, you know, we need to market ourselves better and work with what we have, and that is part of what we have. We're a historic town. I don't, and I'm not trying to sound negative here, but I'd like to see us put our money towards tourism and that type of industry, because we're historic, we've got great outdoors all around us. There's not going to be anything east of us anytime soon. It's state land, not too far on the other side of 79. Anyway, but to make a long story short, they're definitely an asset, but I think we need to look at this a little more in depth and, you know, and work with them. We've tried, we've helped them, like, you know, on the trucks and fire trucks and that type of stuff, but, yeah, that's, that's it.
Councilmember Hughes, do you have anything?
On this one?
Yes, on this one topic to-
Thank you, guys. Okay. I just, when I look at this, I look at a bigger picture, and I think that we keep saying that we want to invest in Florence, we want to bring tourism in, we want to show that we're open for business, that we're supportive, and obviously, we can't just give money away and we can't just support the businesses around us. But when I look at the Historical Museum, I look at it as part of our historical district. It's something that we need to figure out, how do we make it successful? How do we help them? Because ultimately, without them, what is the negative? If they were to fail and have to close their doors and the county seat lost its museum, where does all that stuff go? And then how do we draw people here? Like Councilwoman Bill said, there are so many people that come to our town because of things that the Historical Museum offers, and so if we lose that or they struggle, it's just one more thing adding to that checklist of things we're not willing to support. And of course, me being on the Historical District Committee, the liaison to that, I am fighting for us to start taking a step towards really making an impact in our historical district, and that would be one of the ways that we could do it, in addition to many other that I'll go into later.
I have one more quick, if I could, just, but I want to explain why I'm saying tourism, because, you know, I understand where John's coming from on an economic development person, but, you know, I mean, we need to decide which direction we're going. I mean, and I've stated this numerous times in the past, I don't, I don't see us bringing in any industry to speak of. We're so far away from the freeways. Now, when that north-south corridor comes through, maybe, you know, but that's 25 years out. I mean, in the meantime, I'd like to see the town prosper and, you know, be more lively, but, and we don't have a major railroad, we just, and we don't have an airport. I mean, there's certain things that certain industries, even high-tech, require, you know, before they'll relocate or locate from scratch. So, that's why I'm thinking, you know, why not sell what we have, you know? Develop along the river with the territorial development and promote tourist attractions. Maybe we could get somebody to put in, you know, an Old West deal where you've got stagecoach rides or horseback rides up and down the river when we get our paths planned done. But that's, anyway, I just wanted to explain that real quick. I'm sorry.
Appreciate that. And then just a comment off of what Councilmember Cordas said and clarify, the museum's not talking about shutting their doors. We would be having a different conversation at that point. The museum is talking about wanting to expand. Yes, within that, they do need to have some roof repairs. However, there is ways, you know, regarding funding that they can through their nonprofit via tax credit donations. I think, you know, the town could assist in helping them communicate. If you would like to donate, you know, this is how you do it, just as we would any other nonprofit. Vice Mayor?
I would like just to add, this is a budget process. If we don't put something in the budget, then we can't do anything. Now, we haven't talked to them about a contract. This was brought up just recently. If I'd have been made more aware of that, I would have tried to have negotiations with the town for a contract. But I'd like to see us at least put something in the budget to reserve that if we do come up with a contract, that we can define services that are worthwhile and services that the town feels that they're willing to pay for. And maybe it's not 40,000, maybe it's 10,000, or it's 5,000. But if we don't put it in the budget here tonight, we're going to miss a year.
Madam Mayor, I did not hear a majority of support for this item unless you have other direction.
I didn't.
So, the next item was economic developer.
No, we're going to vote a majority on each item.
We can't vote tonight, because this is not a genderized to vote. We just have to see if there's a majority of folks that support taking it back to the Budget Committee, and I didn't hear that.
Yeah, so, our town manager was just getting our opinion, so he listened to what the, you know, everybody had an opportunity to communicate on council, and from what everybody had communicated, there wasn't-
A desire in pushing that.
Enough support to move that forward.
Because it's for, we're not voting, but it's still the same rules. Four people have to say, yes, that's what we want. Well, I do, I agree with Vice, the Vice Mayor, that something should be placed for the historic district, historic, so I-
Now, I believe we have $200,000 in the draft budget for investments in the historic district.
Okay, so, that could, could that be utilized for that?
Not as a gift, no.
No, not a gift, but like helping with the roof or doing something?
That could be made as a special request, very similar to what we do with the school district for the Operation Graduation. But once again, it would have to have a scope and show a benefit. But, yeah, I don't know, it's, I'm looking, I still see four to three. So, I don't know, I don't know what to do, and this is going to take all night if we do things this way. But we do have 200,000, it's in the draft budget specifically oriented towards investments in the historic district.
Okay.
I see four in favor of it.
Well, we can't vote.
Yeah, we can't.
Hey, but you said four to three. I'm just, you know-
So, I guess, I guess, even though we can't vote, let's go down through and see if you're for $40,000 to the Historical Society.
I'm not saying $40,000, I'm saying put something in the budget for the museum.
Mayor, it's up to you.
All right, so we cannot tag it for the museum. We have $200,000 in the budget for the historical district. As we said, if an organization has a special request, they can always come before council, and at that time, it could be voted on by our council. But again, within that $200,000 that's set for improvements within that historical district, it would take away from another project within that historical district. Remember, if we're taking money from something to go to something else, it's a very fine balance, and unfortunately, we can only do what we can do with what we have funds with. What I would recommend is if that organization was going to take advantage of that opportunity, I would encourage them, since they're a 501(c)(3), to seek out, you know, a matching grant, so that way they could say, this organization is willing to donate, you know, $5,000. Will the town match us with $5,000? And, you know, that could be a partnership, especially if they're looking at the cost of, you know, fixing roof repairs.
Okay.
Okay? The next item that was on here to discuss is the Economic Development Director. So, this item came before our Budget Committee, and we did. You know, a lot of us champion economic development within our community sitting on council. We want to see the community thrive. A lot of the conversations that we had and a lot of the points that staff brought forward was, you know, we're in the middle right now of revisiting our strategic plan. With our strategic plan, that's going to dictate where our priorities lie. If we bring on a director, an Economic Development Director at this time, really, right now, they're in limbo. So, we would essentially be paying them approximately, in comparison to other municipalities, anywhere between an 80 and $100,000 salary. On top of that, you have to add in the benefits. And really, I don't want to say there's nothing that they would do, but their job would be very challenging at this point, because we also have some other amazing opportunities within our town that we've been working on as a council, but as well, staff has been exploring and bringing in those partnerships that will be coming before us in regards to economic development and things that are happening within our town. Tying that in with that third item regarding the recreational facility, that would be a public-private partnership that would economically drive our town. Tying it back to all of the infrastructure and those items that we're laying down, like the water lines, the sprinkler system, and Brent, I'm going to tag you in in a second, all of those improvements that we're making, that is going to, we're laying that foundation for our economic development through those actions right now. So, Mr. Billingsley, can you fill in my missing pieces, because I know that I didn't cover it all?
I'll do my best. First off, I would love to have help on the economic development side, and at some point, we will, that will be a very important need for the community. But the mayor's right, the advice that was provided to the Budget Committee was, the timing is not right. Keep in mind that we have to balance a budget and taking 100 to 120,000 and putting that towards a position, you have to give to get. The two positions that have been recommended by the Budget Committee, you'll see even them, we're not funding for 100% of the year, we're funding for 75% of the year to try to, try to balance the budget. The mayor is absolutely request, absolutely right in responding to the request, and that is, we're doing our general plan, we're doing a strategic plan update, we're updating a number of our foundational documents, including the redevelopment plan. We're in the middle of making gigantic investments in infrastructure to facilitate future economic development and job growth. That's not to say that we haven't expanded local businesses or brought in additional business. Just this last year, the Florence Hospital, which has sat vacant for a very long time, now is occupied and employs 46 people. There isn't a town in Penal County that wouldn't love to have that facility there employing 46 people. Our hospital, that has sat vacant for almost two years, the Florence Anthem Hospital, is going to be occupied and operational in June of this year. These are gigantic strides that others in the county would like to have. The challenge at this point is we have limited resources. We're trying to put those resources to where they can have the most impact, and we are in a little bit of a growing period from the ED standpoint where we're solidifying our mission. For goodness sakes, one of the things that I hear frequently is, why aren't we recruiting industrial folks to the town of Florence? Well, did you know that we only have one light industrially zoned property? You can't even put industrial on it. We're going to update our general plan. We can look to additional opportunities for industrial properties, and then we need to come up with a plan on how we fund getting infrastructure to those properties, because a property without water, sewer, good transportation, access to power is not useful from a recruiting perspective. We're at a significant disadvantage with some of our adjacent communities. It is not fair to compare Florence with Casa Grande. It's not fair to even compare us to Eloy because of the strengths that they have. We're continuing to see property values raised, which is very important. We have a more vibrant downtown than we've had since I've been here in 2015, and we've made a lot of, we've had a lot of success stories. Our hope from a staff perspective is to continue to build on what we have with the resources that we have and to revisit at a later time.
Councilmember Cordas?
I just, I asked these questions and I didn't get them answered, so I'm going to throw this one out, because it's directly related to the economic development. In my big old workbook that you gave me, there is a General Fund 10-551, and there is item number 101, salaries and wages, and it's labeled Department of Economic Development, a salary of $63,350, add in insurance and all that, we're looking at $84,000. My question was, who is this? And if we're saying that we're not budgeting for that, why is it in my budget?
It is Ben Bitter. That is Ben Bitter, his salary and his benefits. And as of about two months ago, Ben is now assisting with economic development, and we're tying that with communications. ago, Ben is now assisting with, with economic development, and we're tying that with communications, trying to make best use of our existing resources.
Okay. I didn't need the actual employee's name, I just wanted to, but, I mean, I...
You asked me who that was, so I told you.
Good job, Ben.
Well... Mayor, go ahead.
I'll use the same song that I did before. I don't expect us to hire an economic development director tomorrow. I want to put a place in the budget for it, so we, you know, if we can start recruiting, because this is, again, something that you won't go out and find on the street. It'll take us a while to recruit that, it may take us six months, nine months, but we need to get that in place, we need to get that person in place to help develop these plans. You know, our staff is overworked, I won't say underpaid, but they're overworked as it is, and we don't have the, the resources to be doing this, and that's the reason I'd like to see us start down that road.
Now, that's where I would actually disagree. You know, as Mr. Billingsley had mentioned, Mr. Bitter, they did have some organizational changes in regards to job duties and who over, was, who was overseeing what tasks, and I've had many conversations with Mr. Bitter, and he's been making a lot of progress. He would tell you, if I can speak freely, Mr. Bitter, that he's not overworked, he enjoys his job. No, but, but Ben, you and I, and I see one of my students in the back row, so I'm going to say this, you and I, we're kindred spirits in regards to, we really enjoy our jobs. Like, your job really isn't your job-job, it's your job, it pays you well, but you enjoy it, it's a passion. And, you know, these are new duties, we have some things coming up. I would like to see him have some time in regards to what is going to be brought before council, as well as, if we put a spot in the budget for this item, especially at the tune of two hundred thousand dollars, where is it going to come from? Because right now, the Budget Committee brought forward a balanced budget.
Recreation Center.
Mr. Billingsley, can you comment, please?
Sure. The council member is correct, we put a dollar amount in there for potential design of a recreation center through General Fund. We've been having conver, whoops.
May I interrupt just for a second? This is, you're speaking about the General Fund, the monies for the recreation center come out of the capital improvement...
Capital Improvement Fund.
...projects fund, which is entirely different from the General Fund.
So, it's, it's to fund infrastructure, so, the money that is, is set in Fund 11, that's Fund 11, correct, Becky? Would be, if we can solidify a public-private partnership to share in that project, our financial projections and the work that we've, we've done would be a payback, which most cities never achieve, a payback on that facility for the cost to construct between twenty and thirty years. Most cities either bond for or pay out of their General Fund revenues to build those facilities, and they never recover the funds that have been spent. The aquatic center would be a good example. We will never recover the funds spent in that aquatic center through our swim fees, et cetera. It's, it's the cost of doing business as a city. Our intent is to do a public-private partnership where there would be a payback, and payback the funds spent by the city between twenty and thirty years later for that facility through that partnership. And, when presented with that, the Budget Committee agreed that, that, that's worth it to take and try to spend some, some money towards that goal.
And that also ties in with our goal of economic development, because of those partnerships that we're looking at, as well as another goal of providing services to not only our youth, but all ages within our community.
I don't think the people north of the valley are going to come down here to our recreation facility, north of the river, excuse me.
Another housekeeping that I didn't get answered via email, in the Economic Development 10-551, there are specifically some items broken out for the Silver King, 214 Silver King Utilities and 316 Facility Maintenance Silver King. And my question was, where are those items for our other building that we have a tenant in? Do we not have maintenance for that building? Do we not have utilities for that building?
That's a good question, I don't know.
I was just trying to figure out why I wasn't seeing those.
Those are in General Government.
I'm sorry?
General Government.
Well, I guess I'm still confused then, because on the General Government, on this page, I have specifically a line item that says Silver King Utilities, twelve thousand dollars, Facility Maintenance, Silver King, one thousand dollars, and I'm just asking, why is the other building that we own, that the lawyer is in, why is that not broken out as well? Or is it somewhere in here just not as clear as the Silver King's is?
Exactly, they try to call out the Silver King because you have several tenants there.
Okay.
The other building is a standalone, and right now, I don't believe it's, is that utilized? Mr. Billingsley, is it rented out yet?
Yes, ma'am, Brunnicamp rented out for the last two years. Councilwoman, I don't have that answer for you tonight, but I just asked Ray, and Ray would be, be glad, it's going to be a conversation between Ray and our Facilities Department, because our Facilities Department does those budgets. They may all be lumped together, that's my guess, is they're all lumped together and they say Silver King, even though there's two buildings? We'll see if I'm right or not, but we'll get you that answer.
I had that on my question, too. Councilmember Wall?
Getting back to the economic development position, we can't just look at the salary as being an expense for any of our positions, because with each of those, especially at the administrative level, there's a significant cost for maintaining those positions. For example, for economic development, we'd need an allowance for promotional materials, travel, participation in conferences, shows, presentations, all of those things would have to be estimated and included in the budget, and I don't think we have a very good handle on, on what those numbers would be at this point in time. I don't have a problem with putting together, or having staff put together some type of an estimate for a future position for economic development, but I would also like to see us, in the meantime, devote some attention to cooperating further with Penal County, which just passed a budget of one million dollars for economic development for the entire county, working with their Economic Development Director, and also cooperating with other adjacent communities such as Coolidge, Eloy, and even maybe so far as Santan Valley and, and Queen Creek, to promote the entire area as a whole. I would rather that we develop our strengths locally, from a historic standpoint, as Bill mentioned, for tourism, for the historic nature of our, our downtown area, and I think that would be the, the most effective way for us to approach this year's budget.
Madam Mayor, I, I really appreciate the council member's comment. We've devoted a lot of time over the last year to doing exactly that. We've been having monthly meetings with our surrounding communities. The Economic Development Director at Penal County and I meet frequently, and we talk on the phone multiple times a week. There are some exciting things that are going to occur in the near future, some partnerships, some events, and some programs that the town of Florence is involved with, with the county, and it's, it's exciting. And, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Greg and the Board of Supervisors for all their support in working with and supporting all the communities in Penal County, not just Florence.
I agree. Is there any other council members that have questions or comments at this time? Just a little?
Just in general?
Yes, in general is fine.
Okay. Yes, so then, I have two other questions. One would be the two hundred thousand dollars that is kind of unmarked for any projects yet for the historical downtown area. When we get ready to decide what projects we're going to do that, are we going to take public input? Are we going to make sure that we have lots of meetings and discussions about how we're going to spend that money and how we're going to get the most bang for our buck? Because that's, that's quite a bit of money, but not a lot of money.
Yes, ma'am. As, as you know, we had a significant conversation here about two months ago, about the Quinn Building and the cost to, to demo the Quinn Building, and council's direction at that time is that money would be better spent on projects in the downtown. Consequently, Councilman Anderson made a request for the two hundred thousand dollars specific to the historic district in the downtown. Of course, it is our intent to garner public input, develop projects, and obviously, that would come to council before moving forward some of the opportunities. As you know, there's been a conversation regarding a partnership on the vacant old Recorder's Lot with Penal County. I have met with Tim and, and Greg and Himantu with respect to a partnership there, they are interested. We've talked openly at council about 220 and 230 Main Street, and trying to save those properties and secure them. That, that is still on the docket, as well as any number of other potential partnerships that, that could be discussed, but that is the intent.
And my last one is, and I might, I might actually steal this from Councilwoman Judy out down there, the seventy-five thousand dollars that is for basically hiring someone to help plan a bluegrass or a 5K run, stuff like that, when you guys sat together as a Budget Committee to determine that dollar amount, did, was there a consultation with marketing companies, or was it just kind of a dollar amount, for lack of a better term, just kind of pulled out of the air? Like, how, how are we sure that that's going to, because I'm pretty sure it was to try to cover three events? And, that, again, is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money when you're going to plan an event, so, are we looking at really only doing one additional event, or, so we're, we're going to have to try to narrow it down to which one we would prefer?
So, just to, to clarify, that seventy-five thousand dollars is not to hire an event planner. That was one of the requests that was made as part of the budget process, and we had a larger amount associated with, with hiring somebody from the outside to plan the events. The seventy-five thousand was additional money to the Parks Department to coordinate that. Now, of course, there are a number of consultants that are used, Pro-Am and others, as part of those events, but our intent was to continue to enhance our existing events and add new events. We were very careful not to call it a bluegrass festival, but at least one other large musical event in, in Florence. Brian, do you want to come forward and, and talk about that issue? But, just to be clear, not to hire an outside person to come and plan those events, but do it internally, and to assume the costs associated with events like that.
And internally, we have some amazing staff members with a lot of strong background education and experience that will be an asset in this endeavor.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, we do have an amazing staff with the education and talent to do some of these things, but to, to Councilmember Cordes' point, we, we probably would be looking at some type of contract with somebody who has more experience on some of these things. So, would it cover the entire cost of a single event? No, but could we potentially use some of that to contract with somebody who can promote it, and then they could generate revenue through ticket sales, things like that? So, it would be possible to do a couple of big events. So, we're still working on details right now, we're looking at, Queen Creek had a policy called the Festival Partnership Program, and basically, that was doing partnerships with different promoters on different events, and we're looking at something like that as a, a way to bring in a couple of big events, whether it's an art festival, a music festival, or, we talked about fitness events, a 5K, 10K run. I think we could do a 5K, 10K run, but the music festival and the art festival would require some outside assistance.
Hey, and I think actually, Councilmember Cordes has a good connection with somebody who does a color run, who maybe we can tie it in for a nonprofit that would benefit the museum.
Right, yeah, yes.
What?
Through the...
Yes, I just went there.
We do. And also, just as a side note, because the, you mentioned the 5K run, the Anthem community, this is, I think, their second year, they have done, it's like a triathlon-type event, and it's a company that just comes, I watched them, they set everything out, and I can't imagine that they're spending a lot of money on that event. So, that might be somebody that, like, we could connect with them and ask them, how did you put this event together? How could we maybe grow it as a town event instead of just an Anthem event? It could be bigger, it could be a longer race, it could start in one spot and end down here, start in Anthem and end in, at our park here, and have food trucks, and make it a whole day event, because there is, starts and it's over and it's done. It's not something that people linger. So, it could be something that maybe we should look at trying to partner with them and expand it, so that it takes up all of Florence.
We will begin to that.
All right. Any other comments, questions, concerns regarding the budget?
I have one last question. I talked to the town clerk about the possibility of getting a list of all of our consultants, and just a brief description, because we go through, and it seems like we have a, a lot of consultants that we're using. I'd just be interested in seeing what they're doing and what is costing us overall for consultants.
Okay.
All right, if there's nothing further, go ahead and close the work session on the 2019, 2020 budget meeting. We have approximately three minutes before, go ahead.
I've got a special request.
All right, I'll hear it.
We have consultants, speaking of consultants, we have consultants out front that are completing our regional transportation plan, as well as our active transportation plan. We sure hope that anybody in the audience tonight, staff members, council members, get a chance to go out and review their work, they've got some beautiful boards, et cetera, and they'll be providing a presentation at tonight's meeting.
All right, thank you. We will take a three-minute break and then come back. All right, we are back. The time is 6:07 PM. Let's begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we will open up call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask staff to put the matter on a future agenda, agenda, oh goodness. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Do we have anybody who would like to speak at this time? And closing call to the public. All right, item 7A, we have a proclamation. I'm going to come down there for a moment. This is one of my favorite nights of the year. We have a proclamation supporting the Florence youth who are enlisting in the armed forces. Whereas, men and women join the military in part because of the benefits the military offers, but more importantly, they join the military and they put their lives on the line, so the rest of us might live in a safer, freer, and more just world. And, whereas, now, when you hear your name, if you could please come up here, and Ms. Maria, would you help me hand them a proclamation? So, each recipient is going to receive a signed proclamation that you are able to So each recipient is going to receive a signed proclamation that you are able to keep. Whereas Alexis Bever Davis. Oh, they're not named. Yep, that's you grabbed from the bottom, girl. Samuel Mendoza. Charisma Corio. He's not here. Is Charisma here? Anchor Bluer. We worked hard to personalize them all, and then when I signed them, I put them out of order. Justin Haddon. Raymond Bailey. These students, these enlistees, have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by enlisting in the armed forces. Each will take an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and is ready to stand and defend our great country with honor, courage, and commitment so that we all may afford the freedom afforded to each of us. And whereas our military personnel defend us in times of peace, times of war, and times of crisis, both natural and man-made, and render the highest service any American can offer, and is a guardian of freedom and the American way of life, and whereas we are profoundly grateful for the sacrifice they have chosen to offer each of us. And because of their heroism, we are able to sleep soundly at night, knowing that we are valiantly guarding our, they are valiantly guarding our freedom, and whereas we must also remain committed to support our men and women who have grown up in our community and are a part of our communal family, and in order to ensure that they have what they need to complete their missions wherever they may be, we must also commit to support the families they leave behind and support them when they return home. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Tara Walter, by virtue and the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Florence, dear hereby proclaim Florence's pride in those who have enlisted and urge all citizens to continue to support our military service personnel and the families of the armed forces. So let's give these gentlemen and lady a round of applause and a sincere thank you. I want to give each one of them an opportunity to introduce themselves. I know what branch you guys are going in, I read it, and then maybe just a little why you enlisted, if you want to share it.
Hi, my name is...
I am nervous. So I'm not a fan of talking in front of people, but I'm Jaime Caldera. I'm joining the service because I'll be the first for my family to go in. And I joined Navy because I just wanted to travel.
Can't do passes.
All right, I'm Dion Garcia, and I joined the Marines because I want to serve my country.
Hi, my name is Caleb Jones, and I wanted to join the service because I want to be something that is buried in myself, and I want to serve my country with the best, and that's the Marine Corps. So that's why I'm joining the Marine Corps.
Oh, Lord. Y'all hear me? All right, cool. My name's Paul Brown. I'm joining the Marine Corps so I can do my part in protecting those I love and this amazing country we all live in.
Hi, I'm Anchor Bluer, and I decided to join the Marine Corps because I have three younger brothers who I want to serve as an example and be better than, I mean, be an example to those around me and be able to protect my country and the people that I love.
Hi, my name is Alexis Bever Davis, and I joined the Army to serve for my country and to travel all around.
All right, so we have our council coming down, we have our kiddos coming down. Let's show everybody how much we support these kiddos.
Bring it up. Here it is. Well, it's right there, so you just click on it, click on that, and then this is your controller, your arrow. It's the, that one.
So 7B is a proclamation declaring May 2019 as Historic Preservation Month. Whereas, the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in 1973, as a way to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride in promoting heritage, tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. And whereas the town of Florence recognizes May as Historic Preservation Month, and whereas Historic Preservation Month can instill awareness of the local historically significant buildings and landmarks of the residents of Florence and surrounding areas. Whereas Historic Preservation Month can promote the region's largest source of heritage, tourism, Florence Downtown Historic District, located at the town of Florence, Arizona, and whereas Historic Preservation can be a community discussion uniting residents behind an important cause, and whereas Historic Preservation has been shown to nationally be a way to create jobs, stabilize property values, and preserve existing historic buildings. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Florence, Arizona, does recognize May 2019 as National Historic Preservation Month and hereby proclaim May 2019 as Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the residents of the town of Florence to recognize and participate in this special observance. We also have an amazing tour going on with our local museum, so I do hope that you take an opportunity to participate. At this time, I would like to call up our members from the Historic Museum if you'd like to come up at this time.
And Kathy was going to be here, but she must have gotten confused at the timing, but yes, I got to see a sneak preview. So tomorrow morning at 11:30, if you're available, come on down. The warden will be there to kick off this special display that's been spending a year traveling across the state, representing each of the different units of the Department of Corrections. And it is really pretty exciting, and then there's going to be the tours that the warden will be leading. So even you folks out there, if you haven't, don't know all the history of the prison and some of the units and how they operate, stories behind them, this is a perfect opportunity to do that. And as far as preservation, yes, thank you for recognizing the Historic District. It's a one of a kind, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
They're doing a good job? All right, our next item is the presentation on the transportation study by Kevin Kugler, Michael Baker International, Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, several months ago, staff came before you to request to award a contract with Michael Baker International, an international consulting firm that has offices also in Arizona. This updated the transportation study is partially funded by the town, but a large sum of it is funded by ADOT through what they call their PARA Grant Program, Planning in Rural Areas, Planning Assistance for Rural Areas. And so we have representatives here tonight, both from ADOT and from Michael Baker. The project lead on this project, as well as the next project, is Kevin Kugler, and Kevin does a nice job. So come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here before you this evening, and Brent for that introduction, and on behalf of Jason Bachin with the Arizona Department of Transportation, Tristan Black, my colleague, and Michael Baker. We appreciate the opportunity to work with you on this project and provide you with a brief update on the progress that's been made on the project and where we're headed with respect to the closeout of not only this project, which is the transportation planning study, but to keep things concise and straightforward, we're also going to do a brief presentation on the active transportation plan, which is more of a bicycle and pedestrian focus as well. So thank you for indulging us for a few minutes this evening. Relative to the transportation master plan, which is more of the roadway-focused type of master plan, some of the needs and issues that have been identified, both from you all and working with staff and the members of the technical advisory committee, was to look at ways to improve east-west connectivity throughout the town, look at the functional classifications, i.e. the types of roadways in the town and those roadway cross-sections, what types of facilities should be in the roadway. Certainly, and maybe first and foremost, looking at a wide variety of safety considerations, primarily some intersection locations, and look at bicycle and pedestrian mobility and the connection of what we call the three development islands, meaning Merrill Ranch, Florence Gardens, and your downtown areas. That's three somewhat isolated areas that are looking for enhanced connectivity. But also, staff really wanted us to take a look at providing some regulations and some policies for things like site visibility triangles, bus bays, and truck routes, were some of the primary objectives of the study and needs, I should say. So one thing we first looked at was the existing, what they call the level of service of the roadway, which simply put is what the roadway's ability to accommodate the amount of traffic that is on it. And we begin with an existing, i.e. today's date, looking at, okay, how many people are traveling on your roads and how congested are those roadways? And you know, living here day in, day out, that you'd probably agree with this observation, that most of the roadways operate at an acceptable level of service. There's not a tremendous amount of congestion today. The most notable areas for congestion, as you see in the red there, which would be level of service F, just like grades in school, F is indeed failing when it comes to level of service. So those areas in and around Santan Valley, which is probably no sup- classifications, i.e. the types of roadways in the town, and those roadway cross-sections, what types of facilities should be in the roadway. Certainly, and maybe first and foremost, looking at a wide variety of safety considerations, primarily some intersection locations, and look at bicycle and pedestrian mobility, and the connection of what we call the Three Development Islands, meaning Merrill Ranch, Florence Gardens, and your downtown areas. That's three somewhat isolated areas that are looking for enhanced connectivity. But also, staff really wanted us to take a look at providing some regulations and some policies for things like site visibility triangles, bus bays, and truck routes, were some of the primary objectives of the study, and needs, I should say. So, one thing we first looked at was the existing, what they call the level of service of the roadway. It's, which simply put is what the roadway's ability to accommodate the amount of traffic that is on it. And we begin with an existing, i.e. today's date, looking at, okay, how many people are traveling on your roads, and how congested are those roadways? And, and you know, living here day in, day out, that you'd probably agree with this observation, that most of the roadways operate at an acceptable level of service. There's not a tremendous amount of congestion today. The most notable areas for congestion, as you see in the red there, which would be level of service F, just like grades in school, F is indeed failing when it comes to level of service. So those areas in and around Santan Valley, which is probably no surprise to anybody, tend to be the most congested areas in and around, both, we looked, of course, the municipal limits of the town and the planning area as well. So within the municipal limits, everything today is operating at an acceptable level of service. But then the question really becomes, as we look ahead to the future, which is what a study like this does, is looking out towards 2040. And what, what do the roadways begin to look like if, as the name implies, there are no build, meaning if none of the roadways were widened to accommodate future growth? So today's roadways with future growth, well, you can begin to see a pattern. While some of the roadways continue to be somewhat acceptable, you can see many more segments of roadways there that begin to operate at levels of service E and F, which begins to give us an indication that there's some capacity, additional capacity that's needed in those roadways, and those have been identified. But what's also interesting, as we look at, this is the proposed, what they call the Functional Classification Map. That is not in terms of the alignments and the existing roadway network and planned roadway network. It's pretty darn similar to the one that you have on the books today. However, some of the primary differences are, some of the classifications of a handful of the roadways have been reduced, because as staff had, was suspicious early on, and we confirmed those suspicions, there was additional surplus, or surplus capacity in some of those roadways, i.e. they were oversized. So we have a combination of recommendations in the Florence Transportation Master Plan that look at roadways that should be reduced in size, but we also have a handful of roadways that should be proposed to be recommended in size, or, excuse me, increased in size. So, just a couple of the key recommendations to that map. There's a total of 18 different adjustments to the Functional Classification System. As I indicated, some of those are a reduction in the surplus of the capacity. But some of the current roadways that receive the most traffic, which tend to be the ADOT facility, State Route 287, 79, Hunt Highway, and then the, the local roads, of course, Addaway and Arizona Farms, to name a couple, those have not recommended for change whatsoever. And then for the first time on one of your transportation master plans, Mayor, you do have the north-south corridor formally identified on a map, and you all know that that continues to be in study, and we're all waiting the environmental determination. But for the first time, you have the corridor shown on a map that you all and staff can administer to. Without getting into too much detail, and I'm here to answer as many questions as you like, but I'm trying to keep this presentation at a high level for now. The results of the, I mentioned, we do, we run what's called a travel demand model. So it's that forecasting of what the 2040 population and growth would look like with the roadways. Some of them are reduced, like I mentioned. These roadways are capacity-related improvements, and there's about, I think there's 12 different segments or sections of road. You can see at least four or five of which relate to Hunt Highway, which hopefully doesn't come as a surprise to you, where we look at today's existing configuration of either two or three lanes, depending on which segment you're looking at there, and the 2040 condition of increasing those segments to either predominantly four lanes, but you see a few six lanes there that are particularly up just south of the Santan area in particular, where the congestion is today, and, and will continue to be tomorrow as well. So, a mixture of roadways that should be expanded, some of which should be contracted based on the oversized, what's in the plans today. But we also have a series of recommended intersection safety improvements that were identified, and I give your staff a tremendous amount of credit. They knew off the top of their head where some of the, and you all live here and live it, experience it daily, you could probably get a sense of where some of the more dangerous intersections are. But we look at that, of course, through the technical analysis and empirical review of the crash data over a five-year period of time, and doing analysis of all different crashes and whatnot. And so from that, those investigations, our technical recommendations come down to these, about eight or 10 different intersections that are recommended for different types of improvements that may relate to site visibility, or lighting, or things to alleviate some of the volumes, or turning, turning approaches, and the radii for some of those different intersections as well. Just in terms of what that might look like with respect to some of the existing or proposed roadways, I mentioned that Functional Classification on those map, on, on the, the map that identified about five or six different roadway types. This, this is a, what they call a cross-section, or a picture of what that road facility would look like as a principal arterial. And so if the size of this roadway scares you, it is the largest of the roads, so they're not all like this, but a few of your larger roads are scheduled to be principal arterials, where you have three lanes on each direction, with, with complimentary bike lane, a protected bike lane facility, and multi-use pathways that are separated for, for pedestrian usage. And you can kind of see some of their design features on, on the bottom there. And I won't bore you with the technical details, but this is, this is a, a minor arterial, which is the next leveled down, if you will, 110-foot right-of-way, with a, a four-foot, excuse me, four-lane facility with turn lanes. And again, I wanted to underscore the fact that you have at least proposed bike lanes, protected bike lanes, and multi-use paths, which are features that you do not find in your plans today. So we'd like to think that's an enhancement to what you have on the books today, not only an enhancement from a safety standpoint, but from a functionality, purpose of the roadway as well. How about the collector roadway? Now collector roadways are the types of roads that connect you, as the name implies, from the busier arterial streets to the local residential streets that most of us live on. And so you can see this type of facility, again, has an emphasis of providing all modes of transportation in a complete street, if you will. You have two travel lanes, one in each direction, a raised median and/or center turn lane, with bike lanes and multi-use path as well, and not to, not to leave out the landscaping as well. This might be a little hard to see in the, in the light green with the light, but this is something that you all haven't had identified yet, but this is an existing and planned bicycle facilities, and kind of is a segue to the next plan on the Active Transportation Plan. But this relates to all proposed on-street systems, okay? The, the next plan we'll talk about has a more of a focus on the off-street components. But with respect to existing bicycle facilities, I won't need to tell you, there's not a lot of existing bike facilities in Florence, that they're predominantly located in Merrill Ranch, as your, you know, more modern or newer master plane community. But for the first time, you will have an identification of a connected system of bicycle facilities identified for the vast majority of, of the roadways in your community. One thing that staff also asked us to take a look at, and the Technical Advisory Committee to be a, a strong recommendation to come out of this plan, is the notion of identifying a truck route. And so simply put, this, this map right here, will identify the designated truck routes, both for large, for heavy hauling and/or for hazardous materials. And probably wouldn't be a large surprise that the ADOT State Route, State Highway facilities are the primary contributors of the truck route. But from a local flavor, you also have Arizona Farms Road and Hunt Highway as well, to provide that east-west connectivity predominantly across the study area, for, again, for designated truck routes. Additional recommendations that are coming out of this plan, I mentioned the site visibility triangle. You know, at the, oftentimes you come to intersections, and you have view of obstructed corners with the landscaping, or trees, or whatnot, so we're providing some specifications on what to do there. We're also providing some bus bay specifications for transit, as that continues to grow in and around the Florence area, both for surface streets and both on ADOT facilities. And we have a section there that talks about adaptive streets for low-investment aesthetics or traffic operations, for some of the streets that are predominantly around downtown, where we have some excessively wide right-of-ways, and what we can look to do to either beautify those, provide enhanced operations. And then staff is also adamant about, rightfully so, providing some policies to provide connections to existing and future planned neighborhoods in the community, to, to have something that be on the books, that staff can definitely administer and hold the, the home builders and developers' feet to the fire, so to speak, for requiring those connections. Last but not least, next steps, the first one's not so a next step, we take a half a step back. On April 18th, we had a series of road shows, we like to call them, of community open house meetings. Instead of the, you know, we took the approach of go-to-them. We, we had a stop at Florence Gardens, at Sun City Anthem, and at the library and the community center. We had about 22 or so total sign-in, which isn't really too bad for a community this size, but we had 10 or so people that chose not to sign in for whatever reason. So a pretty good turnout, and some good input overall that contributed to the plan. And tonight as well, thank you Brent, in terms of providing a presentation to you all, Mayor and Council, and receiving your input. And then from here, we will prepare the draft final report, that includes a plan of improvements, some access management guidelines, and give staff a, a planning-level cost estimate per lane mile for these roadway types, that will assist you and staff in, particularly with your CIP planning for roadways in the future, so you have a, a nice cost estimate that you can pivot off of moving forward. And we will be having a second public meeting as well, to roll out the final draft plan and the recommendations as well. So Mayor, I know I talked a little fast, but I promised you I wasn't going to take too much of your time tonight, and that was the first presentation on the Transportation Master Plan, and unless Brent tells me otherwise, I suppose it'd be appropriate to entertain any questions on this particular planet right now, if you so choose, Mayor.
I appreciate that presentation. Do you have an estimated timeline of when that report would be ready?
Yeah, Mayor and Members of the Council, yes. We're looking at, for the draft final report, we're looking at mid-July for that, to roll out of that plan, and then still working with staff to identify a public meeting time. We, we know it's in the dead of summer, not, not optimum, but we'll work with staff and you all to identify a meeting time and date that's most appropriate for your community.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Billingsley, is there anything you wanted to add?
It's been an absolute pleasure working with ADOT and Michael Baker on this project. I'm so happy with the folks that have come out at the public meetings. Kevin, how many people did you have tonight? There was a lot of people there talking to you tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Brent. I was remiss for not mentioning that, Brent. Yeah, we, if you notice, we set up some boards in the hallway, and particularly with your, your youth here tonight and their parents, that was, we had a critical mass there. We probably had another 15 to 25 folks that we're out there talking with. So, again, some, some good input, so we appreciate the activeness of your community.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
I just have a quick question. The previous plan from 2008 was titled the Coolidge-Florence Regional Transportation Plan. This plan is exclusive to Florence, or is there consideration included for the Coolidge area?
Yes, Mayor Walter, Councilmember Wall, yes. To answer your question, short answer is yes, it is exclusive to the Town of Florence. The 2008 plan was a, a plan that was done as a small-area transportation study that included both communities, but this, this plan is absolutely focused on the Town of Florence's needs and desires.
Okay. Thank you. And will those boards be up for any period of time passed tonight?
We can make them available, if you would certainly like to, but then we can also provide them digitally to put on the, the website. There is, you know, a project website, we can make those available, whatever, whichever you prefer.
It's just kind of hard to look at the printed version of those maps and really get a feel for what they represent.
Sure.
Larger posters, or maybe the online versions would be easier to read.
If Kevin would be okay with it, I'd love to keep the boards for like a week, and you can get them next time that you come down. Councilmember, to help Kevin with his answer to you earlier, I happened to be a consultant when the Florence-Coolidge Regional Transportation Study was done before, and proposed on the project, and didn't get it. But the, the reason why they combined the two is ADOT was low on money, it was a grant program, both entities had applied, and so they essentially were given an option. We'll choose one or the two of you, one of the two of you, or we can combine the effort. In hindsight, it kind of missed the mark, so this time, it's, it's, it's great for us that it has a focus on, on Florence in particular. One of the things that, that I'd be remiss if I didn't say is the positive support that we've gotten from the Maricopa Association of Governments, MAG, with respect to this project, because they very much had to assist in the modeling effort. And now we doubly benefit because we have far more detail in the regional transportation map now from the refinement that's taken place as part of this study. Before this, this study took place, we call them transportation analysis zones, or TASs in a model. They're large areas that are supposed to have logical boundaries, and they show amount of employment, amount of residential population in those specific areas, and they're utilized through mathematical subroutines to determine where people are going, and to, to come up with the, the travel demand information and level of service. Now we have what's called a refined model in Florence, and, and we're no longer dealing with big generalized areas. We're, we're a contributor to the regional model, and can also glean information from that regional model, so that was invaluable as part of this process.
Vice Mayor?
The north-south corridor, how firm is that?
Let me take a stab at that.
Please.
Let's see.
Actually, we just talked about this too at our most recent CAG meeting, so I'm gonna...
We do. So, kind of like our conversation at the last meeting, it's not really up to us where the north-south corridor goes. Ultimately, it's up to the sponsoring agency and governed by the National Environmental Policy Act. There is a study ongoing to, it's called a categorical EIS, to take a look at that corridor and determine what the federal government refers to as a preferred alternative. At this time, there is a western alternative, and there are, there's an eastern alternative that has some sub-alternatives. All those are being evaluated by the consultant. One of the things that I have been asking for and couldn't wait for is to actually show a Town of Florence adopted map and study that shows the alignment that we prefer. So that's item one. And it, it has more beyond just showing a line on a map, because as you know, there was a lot of work done to work with developers and identify that alignment through residential and commercial developments in this portion of Pinau County relating to that, that corridor. And thirdly, we partnered with all the counties of Pinau County and the counties as well to go to the voters on the half-cent sales tax. Something happened with my, oh, there we go. To, to go to the voters with the half-cent sales tax, and that alignment was used for that effort as well. So not only will you have Kevin and the Regional Transportation Plan here tonight, but we also have a second item on the agenda tonight that addresses that issue.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no further questions, comments, we'll move to the next presentation on the Active Transportation Plan.
Mayor Walter, Members of the Council, thank you for the opportunity to participate and be a part of the Active Transportation Plan. And similar to what Brent had suggested before, our partners at the Maricopa Association of Governments provided funding assistance with you all, and kudos to staff for being successful in being, this was a, a grant that had to be awarded. It was a competitive grant, and that staff did a great job of obtaining Brian and his, and Brent and the crew. So, real briefly, we're going to speak about the plan objectives, some of the trends in Active Transportation Planning around the country, just real briefly. A survey that we've been conducting with your constituents, Mayor, and some of the findings and preliminary recommendations, and talk about the public open house summary and where we're going next. A lot of words on the, on the screen there, but some of the key objectives, and these are, there was a total of 18 in this plan that were identified, so a lot of different needs. I'm just going to be focusing on what was viewed as maybe some more of the priority needs, Mayor. And certainly, in no particular order, I suppose, but we talked about establishing a connection between Anthem and Florence Gardens and downtown Florence, the, the Three Development Islands, if you will, and providing an enhanced level of bicycle and pedestrian connectivity between those, those three kind of core areas of the community. We also took, looked at evaluating a greater mobility potential on State Route 79 corridor, particularly looking for, and putting emphasis on bicycle connectivity from the high school to the community center along, along 79. And number three, they're developing an updated hierarchy of trails and paths with detailed cross-sections for each, which is certainly a focal point, really the meat and potatoes of this plan. Providing recommended path and trail connections from the existing rodeo grounds along 79, not the, the 79, to downtown. Evaluate cart transit stops and offer recommendations for improved accessibility, trail connections, and bicycle parking. So while transit in and of itself and operationally is not a, a, a key component of either study, looking at providing connections to existing transit and potential future stops was evaluated. Number six there was conducting a survey of Florence residents to solicit their input on desired bicycle and pedestrian needs and priorities. Evaluate number seven, trail connections to the regional CAP trail. Evaluate number seven, trail connections to the regional CAP trail that is being evaluated by the county, Pinell County, as well as you all. And provide planned recommendations that can leverage existing and planned paths and trails to promote and really showcase community events and enhance, using trails and bicycle facilities to enhance tourism opportunities, which we think there's a wonderful opportunity here to do that, actually. So how about a little bit of the flavor of the current pedestrian and bicycle users in the community? Now this information came from a cart survey that was done just before we started, so we had the ability to kind of piggyback off of that. And it looks, about 4% of residents said walking or biking is their most commonly used form of transportation, which I know sounds kind of low, but 4% as an average to other communities isn't too bad. 34% travel less than 10 miles to work or school. Overall, 62% of those respondents were the age of 65 years or older, so a little bit tilted towards our chronologically advanced population that we're all inching towards ourselves. And Anthem and Merrill Ranch experiences the highest frequency of bicycle and pedestrian activity. And that goes back to my earlier comments of, they predominantly have most of the facilities that lend themselves to that. And then bicycle use, interestingly enough, is more common on State Route 79 and more frequent than on Hunt Highway, is what that study was showing. So briefly, some safety trends in active transportation, not just in Florence, but statewide and nationally. Bicycle fatalities have increased 32%, and if you all see the news like I do, you know, pedestrian bicycle injuries and fatalities are on the increase, and it's a horrible thing to see. But motorists aren't always the ones at fault. Bicyclists are at fault 50% of the time, often have to do with failure to yield or riding in the wrong direction, tend to be the most common citations. Arizona, dubious distinction, had the ninth highest number of bicycle vehicle crashes in the United States, ranked fifth in the nation. However, as the bottom bullet point indicates, we are improving, okay? So we're, from 2012 to '16 compared to '04 to '08, there was a 10% reduction in bicycle crashes overall.
Oh, it's Amber.
Yeah.
Sorry, Amber Alert.
Funny enough, we had that last time we were here, so I don't know what that says about us, but... So some real, just bicycle and pedestrian crash locations. You don't have a tremendous number of them, but I mentioned in the prior report that we looked at crash data from 2013 to 2017, which is considered the most relevant or most current data. There's a total of three fatalities relative to bike and ped, and you can see there as indicated by the red asterix, asterix on the map there. So three fatalities, two incapacitating injuries, and two non-incapacitating injuries in Florence in terms of your crash history relative to bike and ped in particular. So how about the survey? And I want to compliment Brian and staff for making a push. We've had a recent surge, and to the extent Mayor and Council, you all helped along with this, kudos to you. We initially had some 36 responses, that's ballooned up to 91, so we've tripled that out, the responses here in the past month or so. So what have we learned by some of this survey? We've seen that the respondents traveled by walking to the following destinations the most. And so, not a big surprise, I don't think, but it's pretty common, parks, other, which is typically recreation areas or trails, and friend or family home, 25%, restaurants and coffee shops, those are the walking or bike, or, excuse me, walking to the most. Where are they walking to the least? Well, unfortunately, it's their jobs, because most of us don't live in walking distance to our jobs. And 82% schools, which is subtly disappointing, because schools are something that you like to see more walking, but interestingly enough, that's not unique to Florence. That's a trend, we do a lot of safe route studies across the state, that's very common. So it's not a knock on Florence by any means. Health facilities, worship centers, restaurants, coffee shops, and retail are some of those that are walked to the least. How about those bicyclists out there? It's the other category, which is the catch-all for a lot of recreation areas. So those bicyclists are traveling the most to local or regional recreation areas, parks and/or family friends, family or friends' homes. And similar to walking, where they're biking the least, is job schools, the worship library, health facilities, and restaurants and coffee shops. But when respondents were asked where they would prefer to walk or bike to those destinations that they currently drive to, it's encouraging that 80% of those said yes, they would prefer to walk or bike if they could. And of the ones that said no to that question, the reason cited for not walking or biking is, and it's typical, this isn't, again, not unique to Florence by any means, but poor connections, lack of bicycle parking or facilities, or the distances that are traveled are too great, or traffic speeds, or that's a big deterrent in many respects as well. So they're rectified, they prefer to walk or bike. When asked the greatest challenges to walking and biking in Florence specifically, the following: bike lanes, sidewalks, and trails, okay, or really the lack thereof. So if there were more facilities, and thus really validates the need to do plans like this, because that, we're setting those into motion. Traffic and personal safety, 27% and connectivity and distance. When asked to list the challenges faced when attempting to walk or bike in Florence, they said, you can see there, I don't need to read them all, but either the destinations are too far, or there's not enough facilities. Street lighting and driver speed, okay, those are the, those are the common bugaboo's that we see in many communities we work in, and Florence is no different in that regard. When asked what would improve, you know, what would make them get out there and walk or bike, and/or take transit, make it easier or safer? Improved sidewalk connections, designated bike lanes and facilities, and improved nighttime lighting, were by far and away the top three types of facilities that they'd like to see, which is great type of information that of course leads us to connections in the recommendations that we make in a plan like this. We looked at this map, if it looks familiar to you. This is the proposed on-street bicycle system that we identified from the last plan with those cross-sections that looked like this. And I don't want to be redundant on those, but I think more importantly, Mayor and Council, what the, what I was jokingly called the meat and potatoes of the plan. This little graphic here shows the existing path and trail hierarchy that you have versus what the proposed path and trail hierarchy is. So you have a plan that's in place right now in 2008, and it's a pretty strong plan, it has a lot of good admirable qualities to it, but it's a little bit confusing with your different trail types and how they overlap or don't. And so we've provided, we've streamlined that and provide a more simplified approach for Brian and staff to administer, to roll out the trails of the future. So they include multi-use paths of eight to 10 foot, multi-use trails, which are unpaved. So when you hear the term "path," that means pavement. Trail is no pavement, so just kind of a natural or decomposed granite. Certainly, and there's the post-imbute open space and trail development plan, which is kind of unique to itself, that Brian's been working feverishly on for a while. The CAP trail, which of course is unique itself, and then we have a series of bridle trails that predominantly use existing wash corridors and features, and then we have the roadway cross-sections for those on-street systems as well. So we like to think it's a lot more simplified and streamlined. And so that table of the hierarchy, this is the application of that hierarchy to the map that you can see takes advantage of your natural features of washes, certainly the Gila River, and provides opportunity for greater connectivity from Merrill Ranch to the community center, from Florence Gardens to downtown, and vice versa, without going on at nauseam. That's what's identified on this map, and I'm glad to take any more questions that you have on that. And to complement that, we're providing, and we're still in the midst of providing this draft report that Brian's anxiously waiting for, anytime, I know Brian, that these are the typical type of cross-sections that will provide development standards of not only the cross-section of what it looks like, but a lot of the standards that go into constructing the trail, and the types of setbacks, and height clearances and whatnot that go into just some of the different trail types. This is a multi-use trail with decomposed granite, eight to 10-foot wide, that show different clear zones and whatnot. So real briefly, Mayor and Council, kind of a recap once again. We did both of these at that same kind of roadshow on April 18th at Florence Gardens in Anthem and the library. We had, you know, anywhere from 22 to 32, however you want to look at it, and again, the folks that were out there talking to us tonight. So some really good, between the survey that was done and the roadshow, the meeting and open houses that we did, some really solid input. And so what's next? So we're incorporating public and stakeholder input, any input that you have as counsel for us this evening. And then as those bullet points indicate, we're preparing the draft final plan that's due this month to Brian, and hope to be back in front of you all, barring any other conflicts on your agenda or anything extenuating circumstances. We hope to be back to you for adoption of this plan on June 17th, Mayor and Council. So I know I'm talking fast, I threw a lot at you, but I wanted to make, I didn't want to take too much of your time, and I'm here for any questions that you may have of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I thought I heard somebody say they had a question.
I had a question. I am, take it back a little bit, I apologize. So I had a question when we were talking about this survey, and this is more just from my information. Did you capture in your data where the survey responses were from, in particular what parts of Florence they were coming from? It sort of mattered to me personally, just because if they're walking to certain parks or certain, or biking to certain parks, or certain schools, certain facilities, maybe where those pathing paths would have to cross. For example, if they are riding their bikes to an ALA or an Anthem school, or if they're riding their bikes, they're riding their bikes downtown to the local Florence K8 or to the high school. I guess to me, it would determine which ones needed to be more expanded pathways. So I was just wondering if you guys had captured that data.
Mayor Walter and Councilmember Larson, we did not have, within the confines of the survey itself, the personal information was an optional field, because as you can appreciate, some folks do not like to provide that information. And there was, the nature of the survey does not provide for a kind of a geo-reference or identifying the location, but for those individuals that chose to provide their information, we can make that correlation, and we have in some instances. And I guess what's, by example, some survey respondents would, will identify, we need more facilities in Merrill Ranch, or we need this or that in a particular location, so you can tell that the nature or the focus of their comments at times are related to certain geographies of the community, so we can piece it together that way. But to answer your question, we did not have a specific where do you live kind of question.
Okay.
Predominantly to protect their privacy and whatnot.
I understand that, certainly. I was just wondering if it was something that was geotagged on there, where the survey was sent to, that type of thing, if they had some type of scan code that says this person filled it out from this type of region.
It's a good question. We often do surveys like that, but the nature of this survey and the budget constraints did not allow for that robust type of survey mechanism.
And I'm just, is there one, sorry if I missed it in my maps, you have the proposed bicycle facilities on-street as well as the one that was off-street? Do you have one where they're overlapping, where you have them together?
Mayor Walter and Councilmember Larson, no, we do not, we have not created that, but we certainly can and have in the past, and if that's something that you all would like to see, we can easily merge those two together.
Yeah.
A lot of times, the readers like to separate those, so it's a, it's a subjective thing.
Yeah. There is certain cross-sections that I personally was concerned with, and making sure that there's mobility from certain parts of town to other portions, and just making sure that they have a nice flow to it, I guess.
Okay.
So I just personally would like to see that, so if we could get that, that'd be great.
Appreciate the recommendation, thank you.
Thank you.
What about seasonal adjustments? We have, you know, a lot of people who are here for winter, riding bikes, we don't see those people in July.
Yes.
How does that affect your statistics?
Oh, from the survey, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not sure it has a strong bearing or weighted, Mayor and Vice Mayor, I know that's a, the seasonal population fluctuation is a big issue for you all, and I'm conscious of that, but with respect to the survey data, the survey was available, I mean, it's on the internet, so whether you're sitting in your house down the street, or you're part-time in Canada, or wherever, you had the ability to take that survey regardless of your current location, I suppose, is the easiest way to answer that.
Well, we have so many visitors that will not participate in those surveys because they feel they're not a citizen here, they don't vote here, so they don't participate.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, yes, I agree, and like a lot of surveys we do, both here and other places, that's a phenomenon you just can't help and run up against. I give staff a lot of credit for doing their best to get, to get the word out and disseminate that survey, and we can just receive as many as we can possibly get out there. If you have a suggestion, we can push, continue to push that survey a little bit if you like, if there's a particular segment you would like us to reach that you think we might not have, but we've done our best to...
Put it in the water bill.
I'm sorry?
Put the survey in the water bill.
Water bill.
They all get water bills.
Mayor?
All right, go ahead.
On the, well, I think it was called, what, the off-street paths and trails, or the multi-use path where you got the horse deal five foot, and then, what is it, eight foot 10 for pedestrians right next to it? Looks like that's concrete or something, and then you got crushed granite or something for the horses. What I'm wondering, and then on the next thing, it's got a 10-foot something, it looks like crushed granite, says multi-use trail, it shows an adult and two children, yeah. I'm wondering, you know, because see, we do, in the winter, we have carriages, you know, that ride around town, taking people for rides, and, you know, I'm wondering, you know, and then, like I say, eventually, when we have the path, I noticed it runs along the river there. You know, is there a way to make it wide enough for a stagecoach, or these carriages, or hayrides, or just, somebody might have a wagon and they just were seating and take people on little tours and let them look around or whatever? I'm just wondering, is there some way, I didn't see anything covering that.
Mayor and Councilmember Hawkins, there's nothing specifically that calls out carriage use per se, although with, based on your comment tonight, I think it would be appropriate for us to add that in there, but specifically to answer your question, those trails that we've identified, whether they're paved or unpaved, could accommodate, the width is wide enough to accommodate a wagon, an eight to 10-foot trail can certainly accommodate a wagon.
Well, and they'd be moving at a speed that wouldn't, I mean, pedestrians would have a time to get out of the way, or whatever. I mean, it wouldn't be a safety issue if they shared the same path, I wouldn't think, safety-wise.
Mayor and Councilmember Hawkins, I'll follow up with Brian Hughes to ensure that we know exactly where the carriage is going and make sure we accommodate that into the plan, to your point, sir.
Okay.
Mayor?
One, two. I, the map is too small for me to see, but, so when you were specifically like Hunt Highway and 79, we have ATVs that travel along the side of the road, and you can see the path that they've worn. So I'm just, when you are creating these paths, I don't know if it's going to go along that same path that's already there, but have you taken into consideration what will be put down? Will it be able to withstand an ATV or something like that going across it? Because not everybody's machine is licensed. My mic is going out too. Not everybody's machine is able to be on the street, so that's why they utilize the kind of dirt part right there. So I just, I would hate for us to put something down that then they would come across, I drive one, so I'll say me, that we would destroy it with our machines coming through there and, you know, kind of not letting it live its life.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Cordis, yes, excellent point. OHVs are not a central focus of the study, however, to your, to your point, there will be policies built into the plan for those multi-use trails that are identified for pedestrian or bicycle use off-road. OHV use will be prohibited on those trails, simply put. I think that addresses your concern.
Yes, sir. Mr. Billingsley, you had something as well?
I have a challenge for Kevin.
Again?
Yeah, sorry. There are many. Last week, we had the kickoff meeting for the design of the Gila River Bridge. And as you know, I have requested that bike and pedestrian facilities be provided as part of that bridge replacement project, and ADOT has agreed to provide that. They showed on their concept last week, provision of those facilities on the east-hand side of the bridge. And to me, that's, that's an issue, especially when talking about people coming from Caliante and Florence Gardens, being expected to go out, cross the highway once, cross the bridge, and then cross the highway again to get to downtown Florence. Anything that you could do in the study to provide a preference towards those facilities being on the west-hand side of the bridge project would be appreciated.
Yes, Mayor and Mr. Billingsley, yes, we've noted that, and my colleague here has been very verbal on that particular aspect as well.
[laughing]
has been very verbal on that particular aspect as well, and rightfully so, spot-on. The conceptual plan that we've seen, just like you all have, show it as Brent suggested on the east side, and I think it would be appropriate, unless there's some technical evaluation that we need to talk with Chris Alice about a little more detail, to move it to the other side of the road, the west side, as Brent suggested. It certainly makes for a cleaner connection from Florence Gardens to downtown, most certainly, without question, so duly noted.
The east side of 79 is a zone primarily industrial, so there's no, people riding their bicycles, I don't think are going to be wanting to go over on the, around the prisons or any future industrial development or future prisons along the east side of 79, so it wouldn't make sense to, I didn't know that, I'm glad Brent brought that up, because that makes sense to have it on the west side, having it on the east side makes no sense at all.
Mayor, if I may, I have one more question, real quick. It had been brought up to me by a citizen, that when the paths are paved, you had said there's cement, is that correct? Or is the material's not been identified?
Mayor and Councilmember Larson, no, it doesn't have to be concrete or cement per se, it can be asphaltic concrete, it could be a cold-pore chip seal that Public Works has left over from other roadway jobs, it could be a variety of about five or six different things.
There was, there's a group of ladies that in the Anthem area, they ride, they roller skate, and so they were really hoping for a nice, smooth surface to be able to roller blade to downtown, so that was one of their requests, so I'm just forwarding that on to you.
Okay. Duly noted. Is that, I'm just, as a personal curiosity, is that a large group, or it's a small group of gals, or?
It was like three or four ladies that I knew of, but I think there is, yeah, I think there is more, I'm not a part of it, so I don't know.
Okay. Appreciate the input, that's, that kind of anecdotal information that helps us prepare a better plan for you all, so appreciate that.
All right. Well, we appreciate you being here, we look forward to our next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate the opportunity, thank you very much for the input.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on the Penale County Community Development Block Grant entitlement status.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we have Tammy Ryle, she is the grants administrator for Penale County. She's here to give you an overview of recent changes to the Community Development Block Grant distribution here in Penale County, and she'll kind of give you a bit of the history of what we've done in the past with CDBG, as well as talk about the changes at Penale County.
All right. I want to say thank you for being here. Tim and Mr. Patel were also at our most recent CAG meeting, talking about CDBG last week, so we appreciate you coming out for the entire council in public.
Well, I want to begin by thanking you for inviting us to come out and give you an update. I'd like to introduce, Levi Gibson is with me, he's the finance director for Penale County. I'm relatively new to the county, and he's a wealth of information on history, so I've brought him for both support and his technical knowledge. We're really excited, I'd like to start off with that. This is a first for us, and the direction that we've been given is to kind of go forward and try to do what's the best thing for the county, for all of the county, and we're really optimistic that we can do something and we can come up with a program that is designed to do something meaningful. So with that, forgive me if I play with the equipment for a second. So, for those of you that, just kind of as an update, the Community Development Block Grant Program has been operated where Penale County and all the communities, with the exception of Casa Grande, participate in a state program. Now, community development block grants have been around for a really long time, and they're primarily projects that are designed to improve both the economic advantages and housing and quality of life for people that are in low to moderate income. So it's pretty much going to benefit people and help improve those areas where we may have some concentrations of poverty. So with that, in September of 2018, the county was granted entitlement status by the federal housing authority, the HUD. So what that means is that in the past, we had been part of the state program and received our distribution from CAG, and now we're going to be getting our distribution directly from the state. So I thought I'd walk you through how it worked when we were under the state program. So if you look at this slide, the way that CDBG was distributed is, here's HUD, HUD gives the distribution to the state of Arizona, Arizona then retains, right off the top, thirteen percent plus $100,000. That number is about $300,000, to give you a sense of magnitude. From there, HUD takes the money, divides it into two pies, one is fifteen percent, and one is eighty-five percent. The eighty-five percent pot is distributed to the local councils of government, of which CAG is an example, and then the fifteen percent is retained by the state to kind of operate with a competitive project fund that they control. So right off the top, when the distribution goes through the state system, you lose thirteen percent plus $100,000, then you lose fifteen percent over to the special projects fund, and then the eighty-five percent is distributed. I belabor this a little bit, because it's significant later to kind of understand that. So once it goes from the state and it goes to CAG, the CAG Regional Council determines the method of distribution for our region. And the method of distribution that's been decided by the CAG Regional Council is that it's equal, so they would take the distribution, and they would divide it by sixteen, and then each of the member jurisdictions within CAG would each get an equal distribution, but they also allowed flexibility that if agencies wanted to form alliances and partner, that say, you go this year, I'll forego my allocation this year, so you can get a bigger chunk this year, and then I'll go next year, and I'll take both allocations, to kind of allow jurisdictions more flexibility to do bigger projects. Kind of some of the qualities are, you know, the features of the CAG distribution is, the distribution's just a simple math, it's equal division, the allocations don't really bear a relationship to the population or the need based on poverty statistics. Larger agencies do in fact end up subsidizing the smaller agencies as a result of that equal division. Because there's two counties in CAG, it really ended up that Penale County also ended up subsidizing Gila County agencies as well. And the CAG staff really is a big help to a lot of the smaller jurisdictions with preparing their applications, they do their Davis Bacon distribution, or surveys, and they really help them a lot with their projects, so it kind of formed a reliance of some of the smaller communities on the CAG staff. How it's going to work for us now is that HUD will make the distribution directly to Penale County, then the state and the CAG, the council of governments, will be bypassed, and then our Board of Supervisors will determine the method of distribution for the projects. How that kind of benefits us, and it could benefit the other agencies, may I backpedal for one moment? At the time that Penale County was approached and qualified for entitlement status, we extended an invitation to the nine communities within the county if they wanted to participate with us. So that option is out there in the future. At the time, I believe, there was too much ambiguity, too much uncertainty, you know, my background is from cities, I come from cities, and we like to plan, and we like to know, there just wasn't enough information for the cities to kind of participate, because there were too many unknowns. So it'll just be us this first year. So some of the benefits of us being entitled on our own is that, you know, the state is taking that thirteen percent plus $100,000 off for overhead, then they're taking the fifteen percent for the special project fund, that's also coming off the top of the distribution. CAG receives a percentage off of the distribution as well for technical assistance that helps fund some of their administrative overhead, and then they also charge a fee to those jurisdictions that are using their services, specific to project-related tasks. For us, you know, with the Board of Supervisors determining the method of distribution, and they can adjust the funding to reflect need and population, we believe that that's kind of closer to the democratic process, and it's closer to our residents to be able to go and give their opinions, we can do more outreach, et cetera. And we really do believe that the program administered by Penale County will have less So with that, I'm going to move off of my bureaucratic part of the presentation and talk about our community outreach. The direction we were given is that we really wanted to have a robust public participation plan, so the goals, when we started meeting with the public and doing all of our outreach, were really looking to involve residents, and looking for ideas, really tried to kind of beat the bushes to get ideas from folks, and seeking input from the member municipalities, and also, we reached out extensively to the nonprofit community service organizations, and we really wanted to, I had, it looks like spell check corrected something to east instead of easy, we really wanted to make it easy for people to access information and participate. So along that line, we hosted seven public meetings, and we went out to every corner of the districts. We had them in Apache Junction, Florence, Coolidge, Maricopa, Mammoth, and Superior. We met with all the city and town managers of all the communities in Penale County. We had thirty-two telephone interviews that were with key stakeholders, government agencies, and nonprofits, so this was a lot of the members of the continuum of care that provide services for homelessness and transitional housing, et cetera. We sent out online consultation service, surveys to pretty much every nonprofit group that helps veterans, food banks, everything that we could possibly think of, we sent out surveys to them as well. We asked them also to participate in our public process, and then we invited all the groups to come to our public hearings if they'd like, and we actually got quite a few of them from the more rural nonprofits to come to our meetings. We also did, for the general public, we created a CDBG website, and we uploaded all the information for easy access. We posted all the meetings in both English and Spanish, we advertised all the public workshops in the local newspapers, and we did an online survey for those of us, of folks that weren't able to come to the public hearings, that they could still provide input, so we posted those in English and Spanish on the website as well. So as a result, we were really happy, we got three hundred and eighty-five completed surveys back. So that's all that I had, just kind of giving you an update on our process. It was my hope that we would be able to talk, and you could ask me questions, if you'd like, about anything. Where we're at in the process is that we're developing a consolidated plan, the data was affected, our, getting our data from HUD was affected by the government shutdown, so we're a little behind on some of the analysis, but we're kind of getting to the point of where we're ready to go to the Board of Supervisors in June. Our submittal will be to HUD with the plan in the middle of October, or, excuse me, of August, for the funding allocation to hopefully come in October. So with that...
Well, I do want to say thank you for coming out this evening. You know, as I mentioned at our recent CAG meeting, I wanted to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to hear the information. In regards to what we currently receive for the CDBG funding, I believe, if memory serves me correct, it's approximately like $91,000 every second year, because currently we alternate with another community. What would it look like under Penale County, because understanding, we'll no longer have that additional overhead that opens up additional monies, what piece of the pie would be shared among those, our nine communities regionally?
I cannot answer that directly, but I can give you what I know.
Okay, perfect.
All right. So, yes, when we pulled out of the CAG process, the county was receiving, I think we, our last distribution, we got like $136,000 from CAG. When we went entitlement, our allocation went up to 1.3 million, just to give you an idea of the magnitude of which we were subsidizing. HUD made a mistake about two months ago, when they gave us our number for planning purposes, they included all of the jurisdictions in the initial estimate, and that estimate was 2.9 million. So I cannot say that if the cities join us, that that is going to equal exactly 1.6 million. I can tell you that the difference, if the cities had been with us this year, would have been 1.6 million. If you take 1.6, or you take the $91,000 per year that you're now currently getting under CAG, and you multiply that by the eight jurisdictions that could participate with us, that's around 720-something thousand dollars of that 1.6 million. So if we were to go forward, why I cannot answer the question directly, is, you remember the slide where I said that our Board of Supervisors has to determine the method of distribution? They haven't done that yet, and part of what we're doing right now is bringing back to them everybody's feedback and their statements of philosophy, of how they'd like to see that distribution done. So if we were to even say hypothetically, the board decides to do some sort of a direct allocation to the cities if they choose to participate with us, and say the floor becomes that 91,000, and then the remainder above that is determined some other way, maybe based on population or need, maybe it's competitive, I don't know, I've heard lots of ideas tossed around, but no one consistent consensus yet, it would still be more than you would get from CAG.
All right. Any questions from council? I love it, I love the idea, I'm like, yeah. All right, Councilmember Wall?
Well, my first reaction, when I heard that the county Board of Supervisors would have control over the funds, being somewhat of a political person, I pictured it as being a political thing, and that perhaps Florence would be somehow harmed by this method. Then I realized that the town of Florence is actually represented by two members of the Board of Supervisors, so I'm hoping that that won't be a problem for Florence of this method. But I do have a question. First of all, I did not hear about any public meetings with regard to this new method, which may be my fault, I don't know. And then you answered one of my questions, that you really don't know what the allocation will be, but what I want to know is whether or not communities individually will have an opportunity to pitch their requests, and it sounds like you don't know that either, because...
No, we do, because this is the first year that we're kind of standing up the process, and the delay with getting all of our data from HUD has kind of compressed the schedule that we're going to have, because we couldn't get all the information. What we're doing is, when we go out to the communities and we met with all the city managers, is we're soliciting ideas, so we would welcome, and actually really want, your ideas on how you believe... We would welcome and actually really want your ideas on how you believe that it should be spent or how you think it should be focused. And I apologize, I'm not trying to be evasive if I try to say things by analogies, but I could give you an example of some of the comments that I've heard. So say we go forward with this. This money is intended to help low to mod income folks. Well, almost every, and then also to provide economic opportunities. Almost every community within this county has like a downtown area. And the downtown areas tend to also often have clusters of that same demographic on income. So from my past, I spent a lot of time working for the town of Gilbert and I can use their example. You know, that downtown that happened in Gilbert was, everybody raves about it now, but that was 20 years. And at least 10 of that years was spent demolishing. But how that revitalization started was with a CDBG septic-to-sewer program that took all of that area that was on failing septic and really raised the quality of life for residents in the area. But in addition, it built capacity for new development to come into the area. And it was a dual-purpose project that, is it the snaziest project? No. You know, sewer projects seldom are, but was it meaningful? Yes, it was meaningful. Then from there, CDBG was used to build a senior center, a part of a senior center that afforded the community the opportunity to approach a developer that built subsidized assisted living facilities for seniors. And that actually built like a cluster of senior services in that downtown area and that started with CDBG. CDBG was also used to partially fund a Boys and Girls Club. So there's opportunities if you think creatively and you approach things systematically and with a vision, and that's what we would like to do. We'd like to come up with something that's meaningful, not only for us, but something that's meaningful for the residents of the whole county because we really share the same constituents. You're welcome.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Yes. The only thing that's got me concerned is the distribution method. You know, population, if you go by population, Santan Valley's going to get, what are they, 80,000 people out there now? So they're 10 times our size, they're superior and Kearney and, I don't know how big Eloy is now, but Stanfield, there's, you know, and then you got Casa Grande, I think they're up to about 60,000. They're going to have a heck of an advantage. I mean, they're going to get a lot more money. I like what they're doing now with just do it equally amongst the different communities. That way, you know, there's not the political pressure coming in because of this population being bigger than that population and, you know, that's the only thing that's got me concerned now. Where we end up, how they do it, I guess that's up to the Board of Supervisors, being it's already in flux. But I would like to see some way to keep it from just being totally dependent on the population and--
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilman, Casa Grande is already entitlement, so they won't be a part of this. They're already on their own. They get their own allocation of, I believe it's like about $330,000 a year. So they're completely separate because they reached a population threshold and opted to be entitlement on their own. Santan Valley will always be a part of Pinell County. Now Santan Valley is not an incorporated city or town. It's a part of the unincorporated population. So that would be something that the county would do out of whatever portion of the allocation. You know, if a project were to rise out of that area, that would be out of whatever the county share is because we represent the unincorporated population.
Right. Well, then, okay, so what you're saying then, you're counting, if you were going to do something out there, you're going to use the same, the funds out of this, right here, right? You're talking about--
You know, I, Madam Mayor, Councilman, I don't know what the board, I don't want to speak for the board because they haven't decided yet. And I know, just speaking kind of broadly, that this is a big change. It's a big change for everyone and I know it's difficult sometimes in periods of change to trust. But we're very committed to doing the right thing. And I have not heard anybody in any discussions try to, if anything, I've heard more discussion about being concerned about the impact on the smaller communities, not that we're going to take advantage of them. I've heard a lot more expression of caring about the outcome, more, you know, we're very paternal, you know, we're not going to do something, we want everyone to be happy.
Well, no, I know you can't give me an answer of what they're going to do yet, but I'm just throwing that out there, letting you know my opinion on it.
No, I appreciate that. I know it's an area of concern. This is the first time. And we've met, you know, if you recall the list of public meetings, you know, we went out to Mammoth and Superior and we've spent quite a bit of time with the smaller communities and on the east side of the county. And we hear them, we know what their fears are and we'll spend time with them.
And my feedback to council, just understanding that this is new information for everybody, is to just take some opportunity to think about it. Mr. Bitter is really well-versed in it as well. He's attended the same CAG meetings I have and received the same information. We could sit down and talk about it. And then we can give our feedback to our staff who can take that feedback and filter it up in their regular meetings with the county. Mr. Billingsley?
I've known Tammy for a long time. She's always an excellent presenter. We've worked together for a very long time. She looks better than me. She's aging better than me, but--
Women always do.
There you go. More beauty products, I guess. Couple of things that I think are important to highlight as part of her presentation to provide some context. Number one, the 91,000 that was spoke of, that is a fraction of what the previous distribution has been from CDBG. You all know that. We've approved two separate CDBG projects in the last two years specific to the 12-inch water line. That's less than half of the annual distribution that was typically received. We had projects every other year, if you'll recall. We have partnered with Winkelman for many years. So we would do a project and use that larger sum of funds than Winkelman would do a project and we alternated back and forth. The change to 91,000 is a significant reduction and that is because of the entitlement from Pinell County. So the idea of going back to CAG and utilizing equal distribution based on the amount of funds that are received through the council of governments, that has categorically changed. That money will never be there anymore. And statistically, because we've been into statistics tonight, by the numbers, there's more money available to the town of Florence going through Pinell County. The next thing is, we cannot be part of Pinell County's program this year. It would be the following year. So from a staff perspective, we are planning to receive our 91,000 this year and apply, even though we just applied recently because of the every other year thing. We would apply for the 91,000 through CAG this year and we're already working on projects to come back to council with respect to that. The last thing that I would like to share is, unlike CAG, another thing that I've gotten from the Pinell County staff is a commitment to partnership. In other words, the county is going to receive this greater sum of funds. Depending upon what the method of distribution is, Florence would receive the remainder or the funds that were due through the method of distribution based on our population, along with any other cities and towns that would choose to code up Pinell County. The real difference is Pinell County is maternally minded. I don't know the term, you just used a second, paternally, maternally, however that works, in terms of open to and willing to participate in community development, block grant projects that are regional in nature or can be partnering in nature. So if we were to identify a project that would jointly benefit the town of Florence and would also have a positive impact on the county as a whole, because Florence is part of the county, they would be open in participating in projects like that with Florence, which is a whole other level of coordination and cooperation than we could ever receive through the CAG process.
All right. Again, thank you, Tammy.
Thank you. I appreciate you inviting us.
Thank you. We look forward to continuing working and talking. Our next item is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is Resolution Number 1698-19. This is an adoption of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, further clarifying and affirming the town's support for the routing of the north-south corridor as detailed in the Pinell Regional Transportation Plan adopted by the voters of Pinell County, Arizona. Item B is ratification of the election of Dan Helsdingen as employee representative on the town of Florence Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Police Local Board for a period of four years. Item C is authorization to dispose of the following town vehicles and equipment that were acquired for town use and have passed their life expectancy and/or have outlived their useful life. Item D, approval of the April 1st and April 11th, 2019 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item E is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes. First, March 14th, 2019, the Arts and Culture Commission Meeting Minutes. Second, March 28th, 2019, Florence Youth Commission Meeting Minutes. Third, January 31st, 2019, Parks and Recreation Board Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there anybody who would like an item removed at this time?
Yes. Can I have A taken off?
Request for item A taken off by Councilmember Hughes. Anybody else? With that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda removing item A.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Councilmember Hughes?
Brent, I just wanted you to give an update to the community about the north-south corridor, please.
Sure. As I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of processes going on right now. There's a lot of planning statewide, regional, county, locally. We kind of took a soiree into this as part of the regional transportation plan discussion earlier today. A consultant has been hired by ADOT and they've been working for about three and a half years on something called an EIS, an environmental impact statement. It's a federally required process as part of the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, which is a law that governs a required public process and resource analysis before federal funds are spent to make sure that individual resources or populations are not adversely impacted as part of expenditures of public funds. We are told that this summer, as soon as August, the draft environmental impact statement, or DEIS, will be released by the Federal Highway Administration, who's the sponsoring agency with respect to that. Of course, the project's being managed by the Arizona Department of Transportation. That is the first line of public comment as part of that federal process. So there are three different documents that will be produced. The first one is the draft environmental impact statement, or DEIS. The second is the final environmental impact statement, or FEIS. And the last document is what's referred to as the decision document, or in federal case, it's called ROD, the Record of Decision. At each of those key milestones, public input will be collected by the consultants, ADOT, the cooperating agencies, as well as FHWA, to ultimately make the decision on the preferred alternative. About 18 months ago, ADOT surprised all of us entities in this area, meaning Apache Junction, Queen Creek, Florence, Coolidge, Eloy, Pinell County, by adding a new alternative to the alternatives that had been analyzed for the previous three years. And keep in mind, this quarter has been studied for almost 20 years, getting to this point. They call it the West Alternative. It just appeared out of nowhere and began being discussed. More recently, a meeting was held in December of 2018 to discuss analysis provided by ADOT's consultant with respect to the various alignment alternatives. And it appeared to myself and others that deference was being provided to the West Alternative. The West Alternative bypasses Florence proper. I mean, it's over on the Gila River Indian Reservation boundary or the GRIC boundary. And it is a very different alignment than has been discussed and planned for, for the last 20 years from all of us local entities as well as the county. Furthermore, significant has been made by not only Florence, but other cities and towns in Pinell County to work with developers to identify a corridor and potential future right-of-way as part of pre-plats, plats, zoning-level documents, et cetera, to make sure that we have a consistent and contiguous route through Pinell County with as little impacts as possible. I'm happy to say that when we went to the voters with Pinell County two years ago, that route was shown as part of the resolution that went to the voters and was approved by the voters at that time. I know that that's being challenged and it's in court right now, but that alignment was approved by the voters. It's also key, and we've mentioned this to ADOT, including the board members, ADOT's more than likely not going to build the north-south corridor. The cities and towns in Pinell County and Pinell County are going to build the north-south corridor. As a matter of fact, as you saw in the paper about a month ago, I believe Pinell County spent $9 million purchasing right-of-way in the vicinity of where the new Nicola plant is for the north-south corridor. So we want to make sure that our elected officials and those folks making the decisions understand that not only are we serious about the needs for this facility, but we're committing our local dollars and our regional dollars for the success of this facility. So following the December meeting, Florence, Pinell County, and all the entities in central Pinell County have been meeting on a monthly basis, specifically working on a refined map and making sure that we have solidarity politically amongst all entities, including a map and the resolution that you have before you this evening. Florence wrote this resolution and provided it to the group. We most recently met three weeks ago. The last thing to be determined is Eloy and Coolidge have some disagreement about the southern end of the corridor, even though some of that right-of-way has already been purchased by Pinell County. And so we ended up with what I called the pickle fork concept, which is shown on the map, where there's two prongs or alignments at the south end. With that, I encourage our council to approve this resolution tonight so that we can forward this on to all the prominent figures and then all of our friends will follow our stead. Thank you.
If you can just keep this in the loop of, as you get more things, if you could just bring it before council--
You bet.
All right. If there's no further questions, with that, we need a motion. Flasher.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1698-19.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. On our new business, item A is discussion, approval, disapproval, to purchase and install an advanced metering infrastructure system from Ferguson Waterworks in an amount not to exceed $1,852,192.82. Mr. Brent Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I can't believe that I finally made it here tonight on this item. We have spent--
We have spent more than a year working on this project, going to the street, redefining our scope of work, and I'm so happy to be here tonight before you for a smart metering system for the town of Florence. Florence is one of the largest communities in Arizona that does not have an auto-read meter system, and it's a great step forward. But not only is it a great step forward in terms of provision of a technology to assist with our effectiveness and efficiency as an organization, but I'm proud to say that we've taken it to the next level and will be, it looks like, the first LoRa read system on our own network. We've talked ad nauseam about the importance of an open architecture and the importance of our steps forward in terms of smart city technology. Our LoRaWAN network is already up, it's already functional and has already been tested with multiple sensors. I'm so excited to come forward with two great partners, very well-known, very large, proficient corporations in Ferguson Waterworks, as well as Mueller. If you've ever heard of Mueller before, look at most any hydrant you go by, any wire in the world, and they say Mueller on them. What a great partner, and they have been willing to utilize their infrastructure and technology to interface with our smart city initiative. Here tonight is Tori from Mueller, as well as Jordan from Ferguson. I realize it is a really large packet that you have in there. I think I measured it earlier and it was about an inch and a quarter. Lot of work's gone into this and I'm really excited to bring this in front of the council tonight.
All right, and it was a lot of information. It was excellent, very well put together. Any questions regarding what we digested? Okay, let's go.
As I was going through this, it talks about... Okay. As I was going through this, it talks about the capability of being able to monitor, you said minimumly an hour, hour per hour. They had, it went back and forth, back and forth, and I was reading through it, and it said that even though you would do it hourly, it would still push on the batteries, and that they suggested it being down to, am I correct, at one time a day?
That's correct.
Okay, what time of day are they going to read that? And the second part of that question is, is that that was in 5.115, that it would, that it would, it would collect it one time a day, but then in 5.116, you had six or seven different identifications that it would be a small leak, large leak, you know, bad read. Is that in, is that away from the one time, or is that at a real-time designation for those if it was tampered with? So that hourly read is just meter?
So, it is a chicken and an egg conversation, and it's an excellent question. It's all about cost-benefit. So if we wanted to read these meters once a minute, we could. But the intent is to have our regular read schedule, but instead of monthly, to do it daily so that it can use some of those other functionalities that are built into the subroutine. So as it would stand, and a lot of that's not to be determined yet, keep in mind that this hasn't been done anywhere before with respect to the scale. Auto-read has been done, these meters have been used, the MyWare system that comes from them has been utilized to do this stuff. But our intent would be to check those things, we call it pinging the meters, for battery reasons, that we would ping the meters once a day. Now that said, if you contacted us and said, "I'm concerned with the accuracy of our meter", we would then be able to read your meter once an hour, or twice a day, or once every 15 minutes, to see over the course of the day what your usage is, without really killing the batteries too much. We just wouldn't do that all the time. But minimalistically, we'd be looking at probably once a day, and that would help us with tampering, that would help us with leak detection, those types of things, unless we needed to ping it more often.
Could it, does it have an override in case there's, for the leak, so that it would immediately give you real time for a leak?
No, it would just notify, it would notify us that we need to go check out a meter or an area. So it's kind of neat. It kind of works like the internet. So the internet is not one computer, the internet is not one server. It is a basis for all servers and all computers to communicate together and to share data and to share information. So that's the way that these will work. Each of those individual meters will work on its own, but it'll also work as part of a network. So we'll know how much water goes in, and we'll know how much water goes out at the individual meters, and if there's a delta, if there's a difference between the two, the way that the network works, it will tell us where it believes those water losses are occurring. So it's kind of neat, as well as it will take a look at the propensity to utilize water at that individual meter, month-to-month, person-to-person, and it can identify if there's an abnormality. If John typically uses 500 gallons in the summer every month, and he typically uses 150 gallons in the winter every month, if he comes in in the winter and he's used 1,000 gallons, it's going to let us know so we can let John know that he's probably got a problem at his house. So that's what smart systems do, they add efficiency and effectiveness to the services we provide.
Next question, thank you very much. The question from the vendor was, will the town provide space for the vendor to store materials? And the answer was yes. And so it's what type and what size of space is needed, and will their insurance policy care, cover the materials in our storage?
They have provided insurance as part of the project, actually two different types, but would you like to address that? Jordan?
First off, thanks for having us here tonight. We're definitely excited about the opportunity. And not only a partnership, but a lifelong, I mean, 20 years to me is a lifelong in the industry, so it's a very long time to partner up with you guys. But as far as the storage goes for the material, typically we look for Connex boxes that our installers can keep on-site. But yes, we've provided insurance on the project to cover ourselves due to any damages, things of that nature.
Where will they store that? Where will, what facility?
Whatever proposed sites.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, whatever proposed sites.
So it will probably change during the course of the project. So in the first, in the first phase, it will probably be at the South wastewater treatment plant, when we're working in the south. It'll probably be at the North wastewater treatment plant when we're working in the north. But at some time, because I told you this project takes a while to complete, at some time during that project, we're going to have the new water yard. So we'll be able to transition and have those materials inside of our water yard and, Councilwoman Larson, what did you call it? The water shack, I believe, is what you referred to it as. So, the water shack.
Okay, and then it goes to Appendix A under warranty? Says the exclusion is if it's improperly stored, it voids the warranty. Are we going to have, the insurance will take, we are not going to be in fear of voiding our warranty, right? With the storage chair?
I'm going to call the manufacturer, this is Tori with Mueller, the actual manufacturer that distributes.
Okay.
I'll let him touch base on the warranty side of the product.
Yes, I mean, the products all have stated warranties, all of them have a 20-year warranty as far as on the radios and things like that. I think the installation plan is over a 18-month period of time. So we'll be managing the project to bring in the material just in time so when, as the installer is going it out, we won't have it all sitting here for a long period of time before we're actually installing it.
Because the warranty, it starts the minute it's shipped?
The warranty does start at date of shipment.
So, so until it's shipped, it doesn't start, and you're not going to put everything over here the minute we get the, you get the contract, right?
Correct.
Not a problem. Brent, did we, in this proposal, are they going to, did we order the minimum 1% total project volume that they said?
We have not yet. Until we have the approval tonight, we haven't ordered anything, done anything. That's why these guys are back here dancing behind me. They want the flag to wave because they have an aggressive schedule to meet.
And then, the last question. On the, Section 3 on May 7th, it says that the connectivity to the Mueller network from the lower ring is facilitated by Melander.
Yes.
Are we being charged by Melander for this?
We haven't paid Melander a dime.
No, I mean, but is there going to be a charge?
There will be charges in the long run. I believe we don't pay Melander until December of this year. Melander has taken all the risk. They've installed all the infrastructure, they've done all the testing, all on their cost. There is an ongoing cost, but it's a very cheap cost as compared to other methods.
Is that, should that be taken at a different time? Because it's not really anything to, the Melander fee, we'll talk about.
Yes, yes, we've already agreed to the fee in the agreement that we already have.
Oh, okay, so it's not anything abnormal?
So it's in the existing agreement that was approved by us in terms of per-device cost.
Okay, that's it?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Who will do the installation? Will this be our people or subcontractor?
One of the reasons why you see the costs that you see is, we wanted to go after a solution that cradled grave, literally, with the warranties on the meters, was handled by the entity selected. And that's one of the things that Ferguson brings to the table that a lot of other entities don't. They oversee, not only they sell the materials, but they have relationships in contracting and all the different aspects, material purchasing, to be able to take the project from cradle to grave, to make sure that we're efficient, we're effective, all the installs taken care of, by them, warranted by them, and they give us a turnkey product at the end that is guaranteed to work. The one thing that, if you notice from reading through your inch and a quarter worth of materials, that is super impressive, is their training protocols. They have professional trainers that are going to come out and not only do the setup, but do training with all of our folks at multiple phases throughout the project. They're going to have somebody here that we can talk to all the time during the project to make sure that the project's going smoothly.
Second question, will the users have any interface with the data? Is there an app that you can go on your phone and see what water I'm using?
You want to talk about your app?
Maybe you're talking to the consumer portal side of it, where you can monitor, look at your bill usage compared to neighbors, that app, anywhere you've got Wi-Fi accessibility, whether it be a tablet, your smartphone, your desktop computer, you can actually go on to a program called Water Smart and view everything that your water meter is producing data-wise.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any further questions, comments, concerns? All right, with that, we need a motion regarding this agenda item.
I make a motion that we approve and approve the purchase and install of an advanced metering infrastructure system from Ferguson Waterworks in the amount not to exceed $1,852,162.98, a bid of $1,610.50, $576.50, and a 15% contingency of $241,586.48.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for being here this evening, gentlemen. Item number B is discussion, approval, disapproval of a reallocation of $500,000 in budget capacity from the wastewater fund to the general fund, Mr. Ray Sanchez.
Yeah, as I mentioned previously during the budget works study, this is, if you remember that slide that I covered, I think it was Slide 17, we're showing that there's going to be roughly about a $500,000 shortfall, budget shortfall. So what this, what this action would do is reallocate a portion of what our general fund budget authority is and move it over to cover those costs.
Perfect. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from council? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve reallocation of $500,000 in budget capacity from the wastewater fund to the general fund.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you. Item 10 is our legislative update, Mr. Benjamin Bitter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We had some exciting news this afternoon. Finally got a draft of some talking points of what the state budget will look like, and have things in there that I think are very positive. Just to quickly go over some of those, there is Wayfair, which is the online sales tax is included in there. We have the $20 million for Penale Farmers in the budget that's anticipated. Again, this is talking points that are coming out of an agreement between the House, the Senate, and the governor's office. And so, given that background, feel fairly confident at this point that the budget will move forward with those things in there. Also, an interesting thing that was added was $6.5 million for State Route 24, obviously not directly within the town of Florence, but certainly something that will connect in the future with the north-south corridor in the Queen Creek-Santan Valley area, and will help alleviate traffic throughout all of Penale County. So again, another item that was in there that wasn't necessarily expected, but something I think positive for the region and for our town as a whole. So we're getting the first glimpse of that, just came at about 3 o'clock, so haven't had much chance to review that. But we do expect that they'll likely present budget bills tomorrow or Wednesday. There's a lot of a push to get them through the legislative session by the end of Friday because it's Memorial Day weekend, a lot of the senators and representatives have plans and want to be out of town for Memorial Day. They've also had their per diem cut in half, and so they have much more of an impetus to kind of get moving and get the ball along the process. And so hopefully, this is the last week of the legislative session, and next week, or at our next council meeting, we'll be able to provide the full update of what the budget looks like and the positive things that have resulted from the session. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, are there any questions? We appreciate your information. Managers report, please.
Madam Mayor, I only have one item, and it's a bizarre one tonight. They're going to replace the carpet in our side of the building this week. And so if you've walked through our side of the building and seen the boxes stacked everywhere, what I'm told is Wednesday morning, none of us are allowed in the building. So they're going to do all the common areas first and move everything into the offices, and then after they get done with the common areas, they're going to do all the offices and move everything out in the common area. So we don't have enough room to relocate everybody to one place. So I'm going to be in IT, if you're looking for me. Jennifer and Ben will be at Community Development, down with Larry. And Cliff, Stephanie, Maria, and Trish will all be over at Community Services at the library across the street. You won't have access to your council mailboxes and/or the council office, but that's going to take us through the end of the week. I'm just hoping that we don't have to do more next week. But that's the only thing I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. Call to the public, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time? And closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events. Councilmember Hughes.
I want to thank in advance Vice Mayor Anderson for taking my seat at the Penale Partnership while I was away.
Go ahead.
And because I wasn't here, the only thing that I would like to make sure that I announce is that they have the memorial veterans...
Groundbreaking.
The groundbreaking, next week at 11 o'clock, is that correct?
Yes.
11 a.m. So I hope everybody can come out and enjoy and look at the beautiful new statue.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cortez?
I just wanted to congratulate all of our preschool, kindergarten, 8th graders, and our seniors that have or will be graduating by the end of this week. My son promoted from 8th grade to 9th grade. Good job doing your job, getting through junior high. And our Parks and Rec opened the pool, so... And our Parks and Rec opened the pool, so definitely take advantage of that. I haven't been there yet, but that's on our schedule for this summer, to go there and try that out. And lots of, lots of fun things happening in that Parks and Rec thing this summer. And I'm attending the tour of the prison, so I'm excited to do that on Wednesday, I think, is when mine is. So, I'll be excited to go and then come back and talk about that. I'm excited to do that, and hopefully, they won't lock me up.
First time? No, I'm just kidding.
It is my first time.
Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to thank the chamber they put on the mixer at the Windmill Winery. They had a good time. It was, it was a great opportunity to meet some business owners, as well as just to mix and mingle and have a good time. So, I encourage people to come out to those chamber mixers and get to know everybody. And then, yeah, just echo the same sentiments. I'm looking forward to the memorial statue that is going to be done on Memorial Day. And, yeah, that's all I have.
Excellent. Councilmember Wall?
Just a couple of things. Unfortunately, I won't be here for the dedication or the groundbreaking of the veterans memorial. The next chamber mixer will be on June 6th, Thursday, from 5:00 to 6:30 at the River Bottom. So, that should be fun. And I just wanted to reiterate and remind anyone listening about the Department of Corrections 50th Anniversary Exhibition that starts tomorrow, runs through Sunday, May 26th, and anyone can sign up for one of the tours going out to the prison complex. I've been on it, and it is really an eye-opener, and the warden loves showing people the lay of the land out there. Also, I want to compliment whoever took the minutes from the minute, from the Florence Youth Commission Special Meeting on March 28th. I was very impressed with the Robert's Rules of Order that were followed, and the business that was actually transacted, along with the input from the teens as to the areas of importance to them. And it's something that I think the council will continue to take heed of and hopefully support going forward, those ideas. Last but not least, in case you didn't see it on Facebook or Twitter, Florence was just mentioned in an issue of Sunset Magazine, which is a fairly universal publication that goes out all over, and we were recognized as one of the hottest housing markets in the West. And what was said was that stretching from the outer limit of the Phoenix metro area into the southeastern part, town of Florence, this zip code enjoys lower housing prices than the rest of Phoenix, making it a big draw for first-time buyers. A historic old west town, many buildings have been preserved, and currently housed dining and entertainment, another notch in its belt. So, hopefully, we can continue to grow and stay hot, and we can expand on those dining and entertainment venues. That's all I have.
Councilmember Hawkins?
No, I, Councilman Wall, just, you know, I wanted to let people know that, yeah, we're the hottest real estate market in the state, and that's pretty awesome. And I want to wish everybody a safe and happy Memorial Day weekend. And I want to thank staff and the council members that were on the budget for all their hard work. And once again, you know, I think we've, we've done, we've done some exceptional work here, and we've accomplished a lot, and I think we've got a lot, a great future to look forward to. I mean, everybody's working hard at it, and we've got a lot of great ideas that are coming out of the council now, and that's about it. But I want to let staff know that we really appreciate all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Anderson?
Well, just to say what Councilman Hawkins talked about, the budget, recognize all the good work that Ray and your team have done, and the Budget Committee want to express my appreciation, even though I didn't get some things in the budget I wanted, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean that you guys didn't do a good job. You did an outstanding job. To follow through on the, some of the comments about the building going on in Pinell County, Councilman Hughes said I did attend the Pinell Partnership, and the forum was builders and developers. Pulte was there, Lennar, Horton, Shea, and they all had the same story. They're overbooked right now. They can't get enough built fast enough, and their biggest problem is labor. We don't have enough, you know, skilled labor to build houses. And CAC has upped their training program, their vocation program, to try to get people trained faster to be in the trades. So, that was an interesting thing going on. The other thing I reported to the, to the council here, and I'll pass on to the public, the Pinell Water Augmentation Authority is undergoing some pretty drastic changes right now in their membership. The Pinell County is going to take a more active role in the management of that. It'll be interesting to see how that, that turns out. And just to reiterate, the memorial dedication or groundbreaking will be at 11:00 on Memorial Day. Want to invite everybody out. We're looking to have a pretty good program. It won't be long, maybe, what, half hour to an hour at most? So, come out and join us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I do not have anything that was not already communicated this evening, so I just want to thank everybody for being here. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Okay. Motion on a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion.[1779.11]